... meeting of the city of Royal Oak to order on April 10, 2018. Starting to my left, let's have introductions, please.
Gary Casada.
Charlene Douglas, Mayor Pro Tem.
Mike Forney, Mayor.
Ann Vara.
Tim Twing, Director of Community Development.
Dan Goddick.
Okay, next item of business is the approval of the minutes for March 13, 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Goddick, any support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Douglas, any discussion on the minutes from March 13? Not seeing any hands, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, minutes are approved. Okay, the next item of business, item C, is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here that would like to speak publicly about an item not on this agenda? Okay, not seeing, we'll close the public comment and move on to new business. This is a public hearing, this is item one. It's a rezoning from one-family residential to multiple-family residential of 2336 Rochester Road, Mr. Twing.
This site is on the southeast corner of Parkdale and Rochester Road. You will see in the staff report that the site is currently zoned one-family residential. The master plan also identifies it as one-family residential. To the south of it, along Rochester Road, is multi-family. I won't go all the way around, but you'll see in the report the various designations from the zoning map, as well as the future land use map or master plan. As you indicated, this is a request, it is a conventional request to rezone the property. For those that don't understand the difference, you do get conditional rezoning requests. The difference here is that if you rezoned it or recommend that it be rezoned to the City Commission, then any use allowed within the district could be proposed at a future date, as well as special land uses to come back through approval. Well, the petitioner has given you a preliminary site plan. You are not approving a site plan this evening. Again, it's a conventional rezoning request. All as you're considering is whether it's appropriate to rezone this property from one-family residential to multi-family residential based on the request. Having said that again, the petitioner did give you a preliminary site plan for five residential units. That does comply with the various bulk area standards, density standards for the multi-family district, just, I think, a little bit to show that that can occur. The only discretionary item is we identified in the report that really isn't addressed is the orientation of the building that fronts towards Rochester Road or that unit. But again, that would be something you would look at when they would come back through site plan approval, should this get rezoned. Again, there's no tie to any particular site plan or approval. We have listed in the report all the potential permitted uses, as well as all the potential special land use that could be considered on this site without, if it were to be rezoned. You are making a recommendation to the City Commission, and they would have an opportunity to review and make a decision on whether to support your recommendation or to go differently. So, that's basically the report. If there's questions on it, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Ms. Douglas.
So, people within, or properties within, what, 300, how was this noticed?
Within 300 feet of the boundaries of the property.
Okay.
Notices were seen.
So, people who live in the houses adjacent to it were noticed? They didn't pop up during public comment, but they may pop up during the public hearing?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Twing? Is the petitioner here? Please, your name, sir?
Andrew Gray, Hillen Homes.
Is there anything you'd like to add to Mr. Twing's report?
No. Actually, just trying to do what our neighbors did next door and up the road at Midland there, Rochester, just a little smaller.
Okay, any questions for the petitioner?
What are the sizes of the units?
1,520 square feet total.
Okay, and these are two stories, three stories?
Three stories, well, garage, first story, second story. 22 feet wide, 21 six without, with the party wall.
Do you have a brace point yet for this?
Any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, not seeing, we'll open the public hearing.
Thank you.
You just have a seat. Public hearing is open, is there anybody that would like to make a comment on this? Yes, sir. Your name, sir?
My name, Dennis Daxberger, son of Helga Daxberger, lives immediately next door, 320 Parkdale, property to the east. Sorry she couldn't be here, but she is 84 years old and suffering age-related cognitive decline. I mean, concerns, it is in building a multi-residence building immediately next door to our property. Concerns include noise and debris, traffic, we've got some hydrological concerns, sewer load, and ultimately, property value in character of Parkdale itself. Half the property is already bordered by that apartment building that's immediately to the south of this one in question. There's a certain amount of noise that comes from that, and if you know, if you understand apartment dwellers, they often don't have respect for private property, and they think nothing of just throwing garbage across the fence. And now you're talking about building yet another multiple dwelling building that'll be right next to the whole front end of our property. If this does go through, I'm gonna have to insist on some kind of solid brick wall barrier, seven, eight feet tall, to block both noise and debris. Concerned about the traffic, adding five extra residences onto Parkdale like that. Now, looking at the plan that I got off the internet, I'm sure you guys have, it looks like the parking is underground or indoor in the building, and it looks like access, should have no problem putting access directly to Rochester Road. I don't want to see the parking lot drive wrap around to the east side of that building, which would be immediately next to our property, that's just gonna increase the noise issue again, and traffic on Parkdale itself. Got hydrological concerns, you have to take a close look at exactly where that building is. It's on basically the ancient bank of the Red Run River. Our property slopes downwards towards the golf course or towards the apartments that are between us and the golf course. Property across the street is higher than us, the next street over is also higher than us. In the spring, we typically get a pond in the very back end of our property when it rains, ducks will even land there. And if you look at this site plan, what he plans to do, the side of the building, which you could call the front that faces Parkdale, is elevated. How is that going to affect water runoff? Is that just going to direct more water onto our property? I need that answered. Also concerned about sewer load. A few years ago, I don't remember exactly when, three, four years ago, whatever, the sewer lines under Parkdale were relined, some kind of an improvement. But for the two years that followed, we got a flooded basement that we never, ever had in 30, 35 years before because of that sewer relining. Something, something didn't go right.
Sir, you've got about 30 seconds, okay?
Okay. We didn't have that problem before. Is adding this, this five-dwelling building, gonna aggravate that problem? You say I only have 30 seconds left. I'm concerned about the character of Parkdale itself. Recently, a couple of very nice homes have been built that rival anything on Vincetta. That helps property values, helps, not hurts. I don't see multiple dwelling building on Parkdale fitting in with Parkdale.
Thank you, sir.
And ultimately, our property value is our greatest concern.
Thank you for your comments.
Pardon?
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Bob's the owner of our neighbor, and he is a good neighbor. I like him, but I'm concerned about the effect it's gonna be on our property.
I thoroughly concur, absolutely.
Your name, sir?
I'm sorry, Bob Sutherland. Lived here for 2336 Rochester Road, lived in Royal Oak for way over 50 years, no, 60 now, I lose the count. I cannot disagree with the fact that water runs downhill, that's a fact of life. I, having lived here a long time, I do know that 40, 50 years ago, somebody did something in the sewers down there, and all of a sudden, in Rochester Road, you no longer had that wonderful rising of the waters when Mother Nature would come down. And flood that little portion there, because you're right, right along that little swing right there, that bend comes right across, if you're not familiar, it's the middle of Rochester Road.
Sir, you're gonna have to speak in the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, and address the commission, thank you.
My voice used to carry. Water's not gonna be that difficult, I don't think. Noise, to my knowledge, I've been in that neighborhood for 50 years, and I've never had one complaint to call through the neighbors and so forth of the apartments, not to my knowledge. Now granted, on the fourth, or not the fourth, but whenever Red Run has the fireworks, it gets a little crazy because the place gets all packed up and everything. But that's just normal because crowds all show up and everybody, it all disappears. Other concerns, water and noise?
It's not the way your property is now, it's what the plan shows about elevating the front of the building, putting this property somewhat higher than ours than it currently I'm just going by the plan.
Sir?
I'm sorry, forgive me.
If you could just address the commission, that would make it easier.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a public hearing for you to address the commission.
I apologize.
Thank you.
I'm not certain about the elevation aspect for water running, I knew that there's three or four good drains down there, along Rochester Road, and which way the design would be oriented to alleviate the water. Now, the water's been coming up there all the time. I mean, as you mentioned, the water coming up in the backyards and so forth, I'm sure the ducks all come around because they like it, it's nice, nutritious for them. But I don't have any particular complaints or anything about any of the apartments or anything around there. And as for the property values, I don't know that it would necessarily negatively affect it, in my opinion. Can I answer any questions?
No, it's a public hearing, you can address us, you've got about 15 seconds if you have any other comments you'd like to make.
Been wonderful being here.
Okay.
I really like Royal Oak, just a few things we're gonna change, I thought, hoping fairly in your future, but thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing, we'll close the public hearing then, and bring it back to this side. Any more questions for Mr. Twing or the petitioner, or, yes, Mr. Chase?
This is not a rental unit, this is more of a condominium, 1,500 square foot for sale property, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so each person will have their own garage, their own door, their own dwelling. This is not a apartment complex.
These are not red lead units, this is not a apartment complex. I've done the ZBA before, but I've never done this type of hearing. When it goes back to the site...
Sir, you have to come right up to the microphone.
I don't know if we can open back up so I can address this gentleman's comments, because I think his concerns are good.
Please.
Okay, great. So, these are not rental units, these units are being purchased, these are people's homes. So, it's in my experience that this type of unit does not harbor the kind of garbage that we talk about in these different kind of rental units, that's not the element that we have here. One. Pardon?
Sir?
Well, you'd be living directly next door to a family who lives in a 1,500 square foot home on this side, or directly next door to a person who lives in a home, I don't know the square footage on the other side, and it would be the same. We have full intention of bringing the property access in off of Rochester Road to not create any traffic on Parkdale, and the drainage swale that we have intended in our plot preliminarily runs from the Parkdale side down to the Rochester Road to pick up the drainage that the other gentleman was speaking of. So, I'm actually gonna be mitigating water from the Parkdale side back down. I think I picked up all the points.
Thank you.
Maybe.
Mr. Goddick, and then back to Mr. Chase.
I guess a question for Mr. Twing. We're not looking at a site plan and all, this is just a preliminary proposal, so all that we're concerned about is rezoning it tonight?
That's correct, there is no site plan in front of you this evening. The only question in front of you is, do you believe this property is suitable to be rezoned to multi-family? If that's the case, then your recommendation would be to recommend to the City Commission that you, they change the zoning to multi-family. Then the petitioner would, after it's rezoned at the City Commission, the petitioner would have to come back through site plan approval. And he's not bound to the site plan you see this evening. That's why it's a conventional rezoning. And there is no, there is no conditions being applied to it. So, your real question is, is this site appropriate for multi-family zoning, given the potential uses that could go on it? When it does come back, if it did come back for site plan approval, then you would get into all the issues of access points, driveways, where they would be from, and you'd have your ability to approve that site plan at that time. He would also have to comply with the city's stormwater ordinance and maintain all the stormwater generated from his property on his property, or deal with it in a fashion pursuant to the stormwater ordinance. So all of those issues and the screening issues would get dealt with as part of the site plan approval, and that's after whether you make the decision whether this is appropriate for multi-family residential.
Thanks for keeping us back on track, Mr. Twing. So, should this get approved this evening, it goes to the City Commission, should it get approved there, they submit a site plan, would the neighbors then be renoticed?
Not as if, not if it's a permitted use with no variances, no.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chase, did you have another question?
I withdraw the question.
Okay. Mayor?
Yeah, my question is going off topic here, but just maybe, I don't know how this vote will go, but I had a question about the trees, there's some mature trees there. Do you plan to keep those or not? Or at least consider that if this does pass and you go back and do your site plan, that's gonna be something of interest.
Our intention is not to do basements, we're doing slabs on grade. So, anything that is unaffected by construction is a mature living tree, that means it has a lifespan ahead of it, would absolutely be maintained. We do that on all the properties we build in Royal Oak.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Is there a motion? Mr. Goddick.
I'll move that we recommend for rezoning as outlined in getting to the RZ 180401.
There's been a motion by Mr. Goddick and support by Mr. Chase to approve the rezoning from one-family residential to multi-family, is there any discussion? Ms. Douglas?
Yes, and I should have asked this as part of the questions to staff, but I'm gonna ask it now anyway. What would be the process if they wanted to pursue conditional rezoning? Mr. Twing?
Well, the process is generally the same in terms of coming to this body and then going to the City Commission. The difference is, the petitioner has to make the request for the conditional rezoning, that's their decision. Their decision is also to offer what conditions that they would do so under. Generally, that's a specific site plan, specific design, and then if you recommend approval of what this submit to you, when it goes to the commission, after the commission sees, City Commission sees it and acts on first reading, a development agreement's put together, which ties the developer to build what's on that plan. And then they have a year or two, generally a year, to start construction of that plan, or the zoning reverts back to single-family. In this case, if it's rezoned from one-family to multi-family, it will stay multi-family until someone rezones it or petitions to rezon it.
So, I'm reluctant, given that we are about to embark on a master planning process, and knowing that corridors like this one are places that we're gonna be taking a hard look at as to configuration, I do think that corridors like Rochester Road are going to wind up with more multi-family, missing middle, that is, small multi-family developments. But I'm kind of reluctant to make a final decision on a true rezoning at this point. I would have been very happy to take a look at a conditional rezoning because then, because right now, as has been pointed out, the designs they've shown us are just hypotheses. Once this is rezoned, multi-family, there are a lot of different things that can go in there, some, you know, without even coming to us. So, I'm interested, and I'm not married to this idea, I'm interested in hearing what my fellow commissioners have to say about the prospect of rejecting the rezoning, but encouraging this developer to come back with a conditional rezoning proposal.
Well, there is a motion on the table in support to approve this particular proposal.
True, but if people know there's something else out there that might affect their decision.
Mr. Goddick?
It wouldn't. To put it shortly, we are gonna look at the master plan at some point in the future, it hasn't been funded, it's not scheduled, so I'm reluctant to use that as a criteria for making decisions at any point herein until that's actually scheduled and decided. And even then, I wouldn't hold that as a caveat to someone that wants to do a rezoning. I actually like clean rezones, and we've seen the Rochester and what I'll call major streets have multi-family on them, and it's worked in this area. So I don't see this as anything other than a good way to rezone properties that front major streets. I like my motion as is.
Mr. Casada?
Well, just to address the comment that was just made, the two lists were very nicely put in our packet here on page three. On the left side, you have the permitted use, and if I understand this correctly, the petitioner, if the rezoning goes through, they could come back with any of the things on the left on the permitted uses, and we may never see it again. So we sort of shoot that arrow off into the night, and we don't know what happens to it. But I look at, I look at those uses, and quite frankly, to me, they all seem like they would be appropriate adjacent to a, an apartment complex across from a park on Rochester. If it was something that might be a little more intrusive, like a police or fire station, or one of these other things, it says a golf course, I don't think you can fit one on there, but those things would have to come back as a special land use, and we'd go through the criteria saying, is this harmonious, or is it injurious, or, and then we'd go through that process. So, anything on the right, if I understand correctly, and I think I do, those things cannot be done without passing through this body again to look at the impact on the surrounding area. So I'm not, I'm not as uncomfortable. If this petitioner, now, we've seen this petitioner, Hillen Homes, they're around town, they only do residential, as far as I know. If they're gonna come back and want to do something different, I kind of would be surprised, but I understand the fact that he could. So, my feeling is that I'm gonna support the motion, and if one of the special land use comes back to us, then we can deal with it at that time.
Mayor?
Yeah, I think Mayor Pro Tem brings up a really good point, and I think it would be very relevant in the case where if we're looking at rezoning this from residential to some other more heavy use, industrial use, you know, neighborhood business, where, you know, we wouldn't have the control to do a conditional rezoning to decide what type of use would be there. I agree with Mr. Casada in the uses here, zoning it to, from single-family to multi-family, none of these particularly concern me if all of a sudden, something happened to Hillen Homes, the property got sold, and a playground was put there or something like that. I do empathize with some of the concerns brought up at public comment. However, I do believe that, you know, multi-family residential here won't be as impactful. I look at the setback, potential setbacks, I look at what could actually be done on this property, and I'm not too concerned about the density, and specifically with the overarching need in our community to have more multi-family type units built for, you know, the different changes in the population we're seeing. It makes sense on these corridors. Again, I'd have an issue if this was right smack in the middle of a neighborhood, but it is adjacent to another multi-family, it's on Rochester Road, and I think a lot of the issues can be mitigated that were discussed today. So, I think, good point, I'm gonna be supporting it because, again, I agree with Mr. Casada, but I do think Mayor Pro Tem Douglas brings up a great point, but I think going from single-family to multi-family isn't that big of a leap for us, so that's why I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing any other hands, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
The rezoning approval passes, and so then it heads next to the City Commission.
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, you've got a recommendation of approval to the City Commission.
Okay, great. Congratulations, yep. Okay, next. This is item number two, this is also a public hearing, it's an amendment to final PUD site plan SP 161026. This amendment is SP 180409, it's to expand a one-story office building into a three-story, 30-foot mixed-use building with ground-level office space and five upper-level multi, multiple-family dwelling units at 626 East Forest Street. Mr. Twing?
This site was before you, back in 2016. The reason it's back in front of you is, as you indicated, it's an amendment to an approved final planned unit development. Basically, our report outlines the changes that the petitioner's now proposing from what was approved at that time. You'll see in the report that the prior approval was converting this building into a three-story, 30-foot building with six multi-family dwelling units. We've also attached the report and the information back from the 2016 approval. The petitioner is now proposing to maintain an office use on the ground floor level, and using the second, third levels for five multi-family units. The footprint of the building is not changing, except for the addition of a small storage area in southwest corner. Pull the site plan up. Additional changes that occurred from the final previous approval was the carports that were proposed along the south property line have been removed under this site plan. Let me get it up here. We're along, this is the south property line from Forest Street, parking along the back. Previously had carports, those have been removed for just surface parking. Also, instead of a fencing that went along with that, they're indicating to maintain the existing wood fence, so you'll have to look and see whether or not that's sufficient screening in your mind as part of your site plan review. Additionally, the parking configuration has, requirement has slightly changed because of the addition of the office use on the first floor. The amended site plan has 12 off-street parking spaces indicated, 11 across the south property line, and one up adjacent to the building. Based on the five residential units, ordinance-wise, they would have to have 10 for the residential units. The office ground level has approximately 1,900 square feet of usable floor area, and based on that number, we're calculating that they would require additional nine spaces, or a total of 19. Therefore, the difference is a waiver of seven in order for this to move forward. I believe the last plan was too short, again, for an all residential project. One of the items that's not identified on this plan that I'd also suggest that you look at is which of the residential... look at is which of the residential, or which of the parking spaces are restricted or used for the residential unit, and how many of them. That's not been indicated at this point. So, since it's a PUD, there's one motion on it, you'll see that the staff recommendation, if you wanted to go forward with the amended PUD, are listed as part of the report. Obviously, the City Commission would have to approve the amended PUD. And then, some of the items that I just mentioned would have to also be amended in that PUD document. And you'd have to either indicate how much screening you wanted, or what you wanted to occur along the south property line. I guess with that, I'll stop, see if there's questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Twing? Okay, now seeing is the petitioner here?
Yes. Good evening. My name's Rick Merlinia from LeVault Custom Homes, and basically, the original project that we proposed, you know, is not economically feasible for us to do. The other thing that's basically happened here is that our offices, we've been, our offices have been here in Royal Oak now for the last six years, and me and the landlord has plans on doing a different use with the office building. So, basically, what this is, is an attempt for me to try to save the project. The first floor, we plan on maintaining ourselves. We're a custom home builder, we have three office staff, three office staff, and we might have one or two clients a week that come to our building. Our request for the parking space, our plan for the parking space is, we have five one-bedroom apartment units that are two stories above. Our intention was that we were going to reserve one spot for each one of the units, mandatory, and the other seven were going to be designated for professional business. Our office of operations is during the week from 9 to 5. In our lease agreements, we plan on telling the residents that on the weekends and after 5 o'clock, they can use any of the other seven spaces that are available. So, actually, in this plan, although I'm requesting a variance of seven more spaces, I actually think that with the weekends and the evening, those seven spots being open to the possible residents, that the parking's not going to be that big of an issue. Besides our fact that we really only use four spots, you know, a day, and we still have three additional. The planner does bring up a point, a mistake as far as the screening, yes, when we remove the carports, we forgot to put the screening back in. And, you know, the wood fence that's there, you know, I would replace it, I would replace it with anything that the planning commission would seem acceptable. That wood fence was a mistake on my part when I removed the garages. And, you know, that's basically the reason why I'm here asking for the change, the variance to it, and I'm here to answer any question that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Okay, now seeing, then we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience here that would like to comment on this project? Okay, now seeing, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the commission for any further discussion, questions for Mr. Twing, or the petitioner? I have a question about the parking. So, can you just walk us through that one more time, Mr. Twing?
Well, with the five, they're proposing to have 12 on the site.
Okay.
So that's what they're providing.
In the back.
In the back.
Okay.
The parking that's out front in the public right-of-way doesn't count towards anyone's use.
Okay.
Because anyone in the public can use it, so the spots they've indicated out in the right-of-way of Forest Street are not available as part of the count. So they have 12, as shown on the site plan. Based on the number of units being proposed, five, they're required under the ordinance to provide two.
Okay.
In addition to that, they're adding office space on the first floor, which wasn't there as part of the prior approval, and based on the square footage and the office use calculation, they would need to provide nine for that. So the total that they're required to have is 19 under the ordinance, they have 12. The concern I brought up with the plan, and that the petitioner addressed his plan for, was how many of those spots were actually reserved for the residential unit. Most of the site plans and projects that we've taken through for PUDs and/or conditional rezonings have a certain number that are restricted for residential use. Obviously, people are going to want to know where they're parking. So, he's proposing that there be one for each unit, or a total of five, leaving seven for the other business use, or for each shared use. So, if that's acceptable to you, I would say you'd need to add that as a condition of the approval, is that one parking space for each unit be restricted and identified. If it's not, then you would need to determine what would be, whether it was one and a half, or some other number, because it needs to really be identified. Or if you're happy with a free-for-all, then leave it the way it is, but...
And these are one-bedroom units?
Yeah, they're small units, so...
Small units, okay.
So, we're looking for clarification there. And then the second part of that is, are you comfortable with it being seven spaces short? I mean, the previous approval had two short, I believe. The rest of it, the density and number of units and those sorts of things on there, and the setback, everything pretty much is the same as the prior plan, other than the screening along the south property line. So if you want something other than a wood fence, I would ask you to identify what you're looking for.
Okay. Ms. Douglas?
Couple of questions, Mr. Twing. How if, how would the city enforce a condition that requires them to designate spaces for resident use?
We would require them to sign it for each unit, and how that's enforced in the sense, they would, if a resident complained that somebody else was parking in it, we wouldn't go out and deal with it, but we would, from a zoning standpoint, concur that that's their space. I mean, we're not going to run out and issue tickets, but we would ask them to sign or put a sign up on it that says this is residence two, unit two's space.
So that becomes an item on a checklist of the building inspector?
Right.
Okay.
And it's identified on the site plan.
Right, okay. Second question, what do you know, just in general industry standards, about shared parking? I mean, the fact that you've got an office use here during the day, you've got people who theoretically go off to work during the day and are home at night, have we used this concept? We have used this concept around the city. How have we seen that play out, or what do you know about general industry practices?
Well, we've got several projects where we've had shared analysis done. We've had Rich &amp; Associates actually look at part of their parking study for the downtown and came up with a ratio analysis of shared throughout the downtown in general. And so the concept that during the day, the residents potentially are gone, and the office user is there, is a practical one. Those ratios, though, are generally one or above for the residential unit, and they are generally designated, and they're not shared during the day. They're not intended to be there for the other people to use, because residents expect to be able to get into their space, no matter when they come or go, so... While it drives the ratio below two, it doesn't eliminate a requirement for residential. Does that make, am I making sense with it?
Actually, you were until that part about driving the ratio below two.
Well, it, the shared analysis does drive the ratio below two, it doesn't drive it below one.
Okay. Thank you, now I understand. And I'll just say that if we do go forward with this change to their plans, I'm going to be looking for a wall, not a fence. That's all.
Anyone else? Is there a motion? Mr. Casada?
Well, I would just say this about the parking that just crossed in my mind, we've seen a number of housing units in which the parking requirement has been waived to a certain extent. The zoning ordinance is two, these are one-bedroom apartments, if you, if we gave them a waiver for 1.5, if that's what they would have asked for, that's seven and a half, so that's, they're one-bedroom apartments, actually, they're not that small, they're 935 square feet, I assume that's not livable space, that's probably wall-to-wall, but if you assume 1.5, that's seven and a half, and then that leaves three and a half spaces for the office folks. So really, to me, the parking, the parking variance isn't that big of a deal, to my way of thinking. That's all I would comment.
Anyone else? Mr. Goddick?
I tend to agree with the comments made, I don't have any particular heartburn about anything presented here tonight. I'm just not sure signage would really help. As bad as it sounds, I'd probably go for the free-for-all parking, but those are just my comments.
Ms. Douglas, and then the mayor?
No, I just, you know, I live in this neighborhood, and, I mean, there is available on-street parking that is really underutilized, and, I mean, even if that became a high-use office complex, I mean, what are you talking, going from three to six cars at any given time? So, I don't see a burden on the parking. Like Mr. Goddick, I kind of wonder if the free-for-all makes sense. You know, I think it's up to the landlord, you know, to really understand and decide if he wants to lease these places out. I mean, if it's an issue, I would, part of my, as a renter, I would want to know that I have parking, you know, in the building that I'm at, and if it becomes an issue, then he would make those accommodations. Other than that, there is that optimal flexibility if it's not an issue, so, and if it's true to the word that, you know, he's a custom home builder, he's going to be in there with a few people a week, it seems maybe it would be more efficient. Just my thoughts.
Ms. Douglas?
I was inclined to make a motion to approve this proposal with the conditions, I'm going to stick with signed parking, I mean, so with signed parking, with the variance for parking as requested, with a wall, a wall, not a fence, along the south parking, or south property line. And, Mr. Twing, was there something else you need?
No.
And with the other, the other conditions as specified.
So, motion, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Casada, any discussion?
I just have a question on the wall, are you dictating it has to be masonry, anything like that?
I knew, I knew somebody would ask that question, I don't know. I, I mean, I don't...
I don't know if it matters that, I mean, because you can get a real tight-knit fence where there isn't a light shining through it, that the same would act as a wall, so I don't know if there's a difference between that and a regular wall.
I was hoping Mr. Twing would bail me out with this.
I'm going to ask you what you want, that's, if you want, you know, anything from masonry, cinder block to brick, to, do you want it to match the building? That's what I would be looking at.
All right, yeah, let's go with match the building, because there is brick there, right?
And metal.
That could be cool. So, yes, I'll say a fence to match the building and its materials and style.
Can it be six feet?
Six foot, yes, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion by Ms. Douglas, support by Mr. Casada, with a wall, not a fence, to match the building, six feet, and then the other...
Assigned one space for each unit?
One space for each unit. Any other discussion? Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I'll support it, I'm not going to hold it up because of the assigned parking, I think that's probably what the landlord would do anyways, you know, and I think that there's enough parking there in the area that if it does become a little inefficient, there's overflow. If this was a really close situation as far as available parking in the surrounding area, I might push back a little bit, but I don't see an issue to hold it up for, you know, in cooperation with my colleagues here.
I like the plan, I think, I don't have any heartburn at all over the parking. This is my running route, I have friends that live here, there's always plenty of parking, plus there's public parking just down the street a little bit, so I don't think that that'll be an issue at all, I think it's a good plan. We'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, then approved.
Good luck.
Okay, this next item is also a public hearing, it's a special land use and site plan to construct addition connecting preschool classrooms and main building Elementary School, Shrine of the Little Flower Basilica Elementary School at 1624 Linwood Avenue.
Madam Chair, just for the record, I'm going to recuse myself on this one.
Okay. Mr. Twing?
I was just waiting for Mr. Casada to leave. You should have the report, you may recall that the, there was an addition at this location that was approved back in 2016. What's being proposed by the petitioner in this case is to construct an addition to the north side of the preschool classrooms that were added at that time. Again, I'll get the site plan up here in a sec. Basically connects that area to the Shrine of the Little Flower School. The intent is to have some hallway space in there, as well as office space, meeting room. It's approximately a 2,000-square-foot growth addition, which does exceed the staff's ability to approve as part, in terms of administrative approval. They are eliminating six parking spaces in the parking lot to the north that's accessed off Woodward, but they're still far in excess of what's required under the ordinance. 199 spaces would remain, they're only required to have 77, so they're above that requirement. Our site plan memo simply indicates our standard conditions. You'll see that if you're happy with the landscape as proposed, item one would simply be removed. They are not removing any existing trees as part of this addition. I guess I'll stop there, it's a simple report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Twing? Okay, is the petitioner here?
Yes. Good evening, I'm Officer Robert McCorry, I'm the pastor of the National Shrine of the Little Flower. I have with me today Mrs. Katie Fotiu, as well as Brian Smilnak, the architect. It's a delight to be here, I have to tell you, the last time I was in this room was fall of 1980, requesting a Don Darrow Parade permit, so I'm back home. We know that the National Shrine of the Little Flower is a historic and signature institution. We have approximately 4,200 families. Thankfully, we have a thriving and growing school, and in the year 2014, we were designated a basilica by Pope Francis. Today, we're here to request the special land use permit. Simply put, we think that this is consistent with the master plan. This area is considered to be public and institutional, according to the master plan. Certainly, that would contemplate government, public buildings, schools, religious institutions, at which this is educational facility, really providing more high-quality educational opportunities for Royal Oak families. We believe it'd be harmonious in appearance with the consistent complement to the original grade school, which is a 1940s building. The connector will be constructed with materials that'll match, or be compatible with, the new pre-kindergarten, brick and stone veneer, doors, windows, exterior lights, similar to what we already have in place. Nor do we believe it would be disturbing or hazardous to existing uses, it would simply continue the current use, which is for early childhood education. It would simply continue the current use, which is for early childhood educational facilities. Uh, also, we believe it would certainly be an improvement in relation to the property in the immediate vicinity. Uh, as was noted, last year, uh, we, this past year, we opened up the, uh, elementary, uh, the Early Childhood Center, producing a six-classroom pre-kindergarten facility. Uh, the response has been substantial, and Phase Two is really designed to enhance, to complement the needs that have been, um, uh, identified and necessary. Uh, we don't see this as, uh, affecting the traffic flow that's in place. Uh, we've already established protocols, uh, for, for, uh, entry and exit, operational procedures to maximize the efficient use of our parking. Uh, and in addition, we don't see this as having any identifiable public cost. Quite to the contrary, uh, having a, a thriving school enhances the, um, educational opportunities, uh, for families, and continues to make Royal Oak a destination, uh, with amenities, uh, available such as our school. So, at this point, I would like to introduce Mrs. Katie Fotiu, who's our principal. Following that, Brian Smilnak, who's our architect.
Good evening. It's an honor and priv- privilege to be the principal of Shrine Catholic Grade School. We offer a pre-K through sixth-grade Catholic education for children in Royal Oak and throughout the surrounding communities. We currently have 591 children enrolled in our school system, in the grade school. Uh, we are a national Blue Ribbon School and continue to have high Iowa scores each year. We employ over 70 full-time and part-time teachers, classroom aides, and staff, and we offer a wide range of extracurricular activities and sports to meet the needs of our students. Um, last year, we recognized a market need for additional religious preschool programming, and in 2017, we constructed our six-classroom Early Childhood Center, which resulted in tripling our preschool enrollment. And this year, um, we have waiting lists for three of those classes. Uh, for 2018, 2019, our enrollment will, in our early childhood building, will be 161 children, and that is forcing us to need an additional classroom, which currently, one of those six classrooms is an office, which would move into Phase Two, into our connector, so that room would be freed up for student use. Um, when we can, this connector is critical to our continuing to offer our very best education for our children. It would connect our two buildings and really give us that one-family feel again. Right now, there, we're in two separate buildings, so it can be hard for that connection between the two facilities. It would increase our safety with one main entrance on Woodward, as opposed to having two different entrances on Woodward Avenue for our students to enter. And the new connector would have a secure vestibule for a second checkpoint of all of our visitors, which, as I'm sure you know, is so critical in today's school climate. Um, it would give the ability for students, teachers, and families to move among the buildings without concern for any sort of weather, and give us office space for our, our Early Childhood Director and our grade school counselor in Religious Formation as we take over the space that they are currently occupying to turn back into a fourth kindergarten classroom for the future. Uh, this new Early Childhood Center helped us to fulfill an important need for our families and help them with their schooling decisions from preschool to 12th grade. Our 92-year-old parish operates one of very few Catholic schools in the metro Detroit area that is growing. God has truly brought, blessed Shrine Catholic Grade School. Thank you so much for your time.
Brian Smilnak from Wakeley Associates. I'll be here if you have any questions, all about the construction.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner?
I don't think so.
Okay, not seeing, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to, uh, speak on this application? Yes?
Hi, Philip Sobek, uh, Royal Oak resident on Woodsboro in the neighborhood behind Shrine. I'm also a Shrine member. I just have to say, the, the plans that they put forth, um, only increase, um, the likability of their establishment, and I can't think of any negative impact that it would have on any neighboring institutions, neighbors, anybody. So, I'm fully in support of it and, uh, hope that you guys approve it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing, we'll close the public hearing.
Uh, there, there are two actions. One is, uh, special land use to allow the addition. Uh, as we indicated in the report, the property isn't a special redevelopment district, as are most school properties. Uh, so that, part of the reason for the, uh, uh, special land use report, uh, and it is addition to that action. Um, so that's, uh, one vote, and then the second would be the, uh, site plan.
So, would you, you would want two motions?
Them separate.
Separate motions, okay, great. Uh, any, yes, Mr. Goddick?
I, I, I like the comment that was just made by, um, a person in the audience. It's, um, this looks really nice, and there's, um, I don't see any negative impact whatsoever. And, uh, barring any other comments, I'd like to move special land use, SP 1804-10.
There's been a motion by Mr. Goddick, any support on the special land use?
Support.
Support by Mr. Chase. Any discussion on the special land use? Not seeing, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? So, the special land use moves forward, and now onto the site plan. Mr. Twing, anything that-
No, it's basically our, our standard conditions. If you're happy with the landscape plan, um, then, then yes, it would just be our standard conditions.
I'll move the site plan.
Uh, there was a hand up here, Ms. Douglas, did you?
I was gonna move the site plan.
Oh, okay, well, Mr. Chase, please, you see that motion by Mr. Chase?
Support? Yes, support.
Support by Ms. Douglas? Okay, any, uh, discussion on this motion? Mayor?
Just say, it's a really good plan for a great institution, so we're, I'm personally happy to see you growing and happy to see you doing it the right way, and thanks for a well-thought-out plan.
Yeah, I just say, I'm glad you can finally connect the two buildings and make it all kinda look like one now, so, good luck.
Uh, not seeing any discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
The kids will be happy.
Okay. Next item, uh, this is also a public hearing. It's our last public hearing. It's a special land use and a site plan, SP 1804-11, to establish a daycare center, uh, with, within existing building at 25423 Woodward Avenue. Mr. Twing?
Um, as you indicated, um, the proposal is to, uh, convert an existing, uh, one-story building to a daycare, uh, operation. Uh, there is no planned addition or expansion of the building itself. However, the property is owned to mixed-use two, and in that district, daycare, um, operations are considered as special land use. Therefore, you're, uh, looking at, uh, staff report on that. Uh, they are proposing, uh, as part of the requirement under the ordinance, to have an outdoor, uh, play area that would occupy, um, city property, an unapproved public alley to the east. I would point out, or to the west, excuse me. The City Commission last night approved a license agreement for that to occur, uh, in that unapproved, uh, public alley. In addition to that, uh, they're proposing to use the parking spaces, six of them, that are on city property to the south, and an existing parking lot, uh, that the city obtained many years ago as part of the 696 and Woodward widening. Um, this site is the first property, other than the city parcel, north of the zoo boundary. As I said, so, they have, uh, addressed the, uh, outdoor, um, play area license agreement, uh, with an approval last night by the City Commission, and they've also got permission to use the city parking lot for a parking. So, item under, one under the, uh, uh, site plan memo has been addressed. Uh, as I indicated, they're not proposing any changes to the site itself, so, from a landscaping standpoint, uh, there are no trees or issues in terms of changes for the, for the landscape plan. The only condition, or non-standard condition, is that they maintain the operations under their state requirement. Uh, I would point out that the, uh, petitioner did, or does have, uh, sealed architectural plans, uh, at this point, available. Uh, the ones that were distributed were not sealed at that time, but we do, I am aware that she does have them. So, we don't have an issue with that. I believe that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Twing, any questions? Okay, not seeing, is the petitioner here?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Bowles. I'm a resident of Royal Oak. I live at 215 Hawthorne Avenue, and this is Myron Poe and Jeff Poe, the owners of the building. We're leasing from them. So, about four years ago, I started a preschool, first, I started a nonprofit organization, and the nonprofit sponsored a preschool called, um, School of Creativa, and we located in Ferndale. Four years later, the families were really, um, clamoring for us to, to add a classroom for infants and toddlers. Reports done by an organization called IFF show that infant-todler care is like a critical shortage area. There's over 11,000, um, slots that are needed for children in Oakland County alone, and that's not counting Detroit. They have thousands more that need care there. So, it was not just our families that needed, you know, this care for infants and toddlers. If you have an infant or toddler, you know, it's really hard to find care for that age group. So, our, you know, meanwhile, I was looking for a space, and, uh, every day, I would pass this building that said, "Building for lease." And one day, I was like, hm, hey, that, that building is for lease. So, I pulled over, and Myron came out, and, you know, that was in the fall. So, since then, I think we've developed a really strong relationship, um, through licensing, or a fully licensed facility at that site, which took some doing. So, um, now, we're, we're going to get the, you know, permission of the city for the, to use that space for that usage in that zoning area.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Okay, not seeing, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this petition?
I'd be delighted to say a few things about, um, this program. Um, as, first, I can say that as the director and teacher of the program, um, who works with the inquiries and prospective families, I can confirm that, um, since we, um, hung a sign and announced, um, that we're considering this move, um, the number of inquiries we've gotten is, um, out of control. We can hardly keep up with the number of inquiries. So, there is obviously a need for infant-toddler and preschool care. Um, it's not just the care they're looking for, though. It's the standard and the quality of the program that we have. Um, time and time again, they say, like, "We knew we were looking for something, um, different," or "something that was creative," or "something that really nurtured our child in a way that's different from the other places we've looked." Um, we don't just want our kid cared for. We want them loved and nurtured for who they are. So, what's different about us is that we are responsive to the families that we teach, the neighborhood that we're in, the community. This year, we've explored that, instead of teaching a standard curriculum of, um, apples in the fall, and pumpkins, and whatever, um, I've explored the topic of good versus bad with three- and four-year-olds, um, this school year, which is incredible. And how better can we serve our children going forward? Um, but we chose that topic because that's what they're interested in. Going forward, I can also say that, um, as an early childhood educator with two degrees in the field, and a strong alignment for doing what's right, um, and what's best for children and families, and a lot of knowledge in that area, um, I can't stress enough the value of this type of program. Um, I, I know that when I found out I was moving to the metro Detroit area a couple of years ago, the first thing I did was Google Reggio Emilio programs in the metro Detroit area. Um, and that was a huge factor as a teacher and as a, uh, prospective parent, a future mom, as to whether or not this would be a suitable place for us to live, because I feel so strongly about, um, this type of education. Um, those are my thoughts. We have, um, a lot of families who wish they could be there. Unfortunately, with birth through, uh, four-year-olds, this is a busy time of night. But some of them sent us some comments that they, um, were hoping we could read for them. Um, one family wrote, um, "They apologize that due to scheduling conflicts, they were unable to attend this meeting. However, they want to express how lucky they feel to have found School of Creativa as a preschool for their daughter Adeline. Uh, having recently moved to the Detroit area, we were looking for the right place to care for our child and introduce her to school. While, while our knowledge about the Reggio approach to education was limited, we still felt that the practice would be beneficial to Adeline and her peers. I now see the day-to-day Reggio methods as allowing children to explore and discover education through their own eyes, while also developing a sense of community. Reggio gives credit to the children to learn through questions, to take an active part in learning, and to engage with others who may have different ideas." She goes on to say, "More wonderful things, uh, about our program," which we appreciate. Um, someone else, um, said, "Thank you for allowing her statement. My name is Darcy Haloweski. I'm a parent whose four-year-old attends School of Creativa and has done so for over a year. Uh, she apologizes for not being able to be present, 'cause she's needed at home during bedtime. Um, our family is so grateful for this school. Our intense little one does not enjoy social situations, never has, and we worried might, mightily on how his transition to school would go. School of Creativa is a place where his strengths were immediately seen and valued, and his creative, artistic self could shine. We've watched our son build a social foundation, social skills foundation, that will serve him his entire life because of the exquisite guidance of the, and the top-notch staff and their innovative Reggio approach at School of Creativa. High-quality child education and care is essential to a thriving community, and we believe our entire area is enriched by the school's presence."
Thank you. Anyone else? In the public? Okay, not-
Commissioner, Jeffrey Poe, P-O-E, uh, 25487 Woodward Avenue. I'd just like the commission to know that my father, here, Myron Poe, uh, we have the first approximately five lots immediately north of the zoo. And the land use requested, or the variance, is very appropriate for this site. It doesn't create any additional burden in this area. The parking lot that is to the south was put in when 696 was, um, the interchange was put in, and Woodward was widened. They eliminated all of the on-Woodward parking sites, and the city put in that lot. It's been totally underutilized since it was put in. The green areas around the building have been maintained by us ever since. We've maintained the parking lot, um, to the south. So, the use that is being proposed for this particular building is very appropriate. It works very well. Um, we don't see any kind of negative impact in the area, and as, um, the previous speaker has said, there is a great need for this kind of use in Royal Oak. So, I don't know. Dad, you have any, um, comments to make?
Myron Poe, I'd simply add to what my son has said. We've been residents of Royal Oak for almost 60 years, right on Woodward Avenue, and, uh, within the same block our home is located. We've had numerous uses for this building. We had an avant-garde lady and men's dress shop years ago. We had an engraveable shop. We had a church organ, uh, church organ, uh, retail store there. We've had attorneys, architects, and engineers in the building, and it's a pleasure to have a group of little kids enjoying the building and being in the neighborhood. We think it's a great use for Royal Oak. I think it will be a, a destination for families who wanna have their children educated prior to entering public school. So, we hope that you agree with us.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public would like to comment on this? Okay, not seeing, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for any further questions for the petitioner, Mr. Twing, or a motion, Mr. Goddick?
A question for the petitioner. The existing sign is non-conforming, uh, and one of the topics brought up, uh, this is a question for you, Myron. Are you going to reuse the existing sign, or, uh, what are you gonna do with the sign?
Our original intent was to reuse the sign. Um, we didn't know it was out of compliance. I guess it's been there for a really long time, and it was just refurbished- I guess it's been there for a really long time, and it was just refurbished. Used to spin around, and they balanced it and fixed the lighting. So our eventual plan is to is to reuse it if we can make it conform, or come back and ask for a variance on the sign. We know we have to deal with the sign, but this this process was sort of a surprise to us. So, you know, we're not developers. You know, I run a preschool, so I'm just trying to follow all the steps. And when when that came up, it was a little bit out of order, and we were getting the architecture plans and things done. So our plan is to make the sign conforming.
Mr. Twing, is the signage, is that part of our decision tonight?
No.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Is there a motion? Douglas?
Approval of the special land use.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Chase. Any discussion on the special land use? And Mr. Twing, this has to be separate also, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion to approve the special land use? Now seeing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Special land use has been approved. And any other comments on the site plan, Mr. Twing?
No.
Okay, is there a motion on the site plan? Motion by Mr. Goddick?
Yes, I'll move the site plan SB 180411.
Okay, any support? Support by Ms. Douglas. Any discussion on the motion to approve the site plan? Now seeing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Welcome to Royal Oak. Okay.
Stephanie?
Can I have this? That's the license agreement from last night.
Okay, next up is a site plan approval, or excuse me, site plan to construct outpatient medical clinic, an orthopedic and vascular institute of Michigan, on an outlot of a large-scale retail establishment, Meyer, at 5150 Coolidge Highway. Mr. Twing?
The site is on general business, therefore, the petitioner's proposed use is a permitted use. That's why you're simply seeing it as a site plan review. The petitioner is proposing to construct a building with basement at lower level, as well as the first floor with a height of about 16 feet. Overall, the building would be a gross area of slightly more than 28,000 square feet, as you indicated, for a medical outpatient medical clinic. They are proposing to also assign 58 parking spaces adjacent to the east side of the proposed building. The lot itself, you may recall, you've seen before for prior site plans, slightly smaller site at that time, I believe, in a in a different commercial building configuration. But it is located just south of the Meyer entrance to Meyer, between the gas station along the west-east side of Coolidge Highway. In terms of the staff report conditions, the petitioner and the property owner need the reciprocal easement agreement for that driveway. The planning commission will need to look at and determine whether the building entrance and orientation is acceptable under the ordinance. It does front into the parking lot site primarily. Landscaping-wise, if you look at the landscape plan, as we've noted, they are removing two 10-inch trees and one 12-inch. According to the petitioner's landscape plan, they are replacing seven new trees with two-and-a-half-inch configuration. Four other existing trees in the parking lot are being preserved. Other than those items, it's our standard contingencies regarding signage, lighting, performance bonds, et cetera.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tim Ponton, Stonefield Engineering. I'm the design engineer for this project. Thank you, Mr. Twing, for the introduction. Just to add on on a couple of different points, I was in front of your board about two years ago for the same exact site. This is a Meyer outlot site. It's a bit challenging in terms of trying to find the right fit for this development. As you can see along that corridor, it's essentially the last piece that hasn't developed been developed as you're traveling north on Coolidge Highway. You've got the public storage. You've got the huge grid with the transmission lines for the electrical aspects. You've got the gas station, and there's Beaumont across the street. And then it borders just to the north is Troy. There is actually a five-to-six-foot grade change on this property. So with there being only approximately 90 feet of frontage, it's challenging to find the right fit and a good development for this site. So we are proposing to share the access with Myers. We're not proposing new access. In terms of...
You'll have to use the microphone.
Development in front of you today, what we're proposing is essentially dropping this building onto the green area, and we're only proposing four new spaces that are closest to the building. All of the other spaces actually exist in the Meyer parking lot. So of the 58 total spaces, 54 of them exist today. And then we're dropping that building on. Because of the grade change that exists at this site, it does make the most sense to have the main entrance located at the Meyer aspect on the interior side of the lot line. However, we have prepared architectural plans based on consistency with your ordinance, which is a requirement for really zero-lot buildings, which we're not. But I guess we could consider ourselves to fall under that that requirement here, since we don't have parking in the front. But anyways, this will be by far the nicest building from an architecture standpoint along this corridor. This will be a medical facility privately owned, so the doctors took great care and going through significant lengths and a number of different plans in terms of architecture. So it's not like a typical retail development where you will have a nice storefront, and then the sides and the rear of the building are more loading and just non-architectural features from that standpoint. So it's going to be a very nice building from an architecture standpoint. The materials are very uniform all the way around the building with the combination of brick, CMU block, and then accent CMU block, stone, and some metal cornices at the top of the building. So the materials all the way around the building are consistent and are the same. So we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner?
I just...
Mr. Casada.
You do have access from Coolidge there. You're maintaining that?
So that's the Meyer driveway.
Yeah.
Yep. So as Mr. Twing stated, we will be providing a cross-access easement based on that driveway. We were in agreement with all of the items in the letter. There is one minor item that, in that same condition that mentioned parking, we are self-sufficient from a parking standpoint. Meyer is also self-sufficient from a parking standpoint. In fact, there's still about 100 spaces over the requirement, even with us taking the 54. So just, that's one small thing. But yeah, to answer your question, we'd be maintaining that access and not proposing anything new.
Okay, no no entrance of any kind there, or or any utilitarian use, dumpsters or anything? Where where is that going to be?
The dumpster is located right here.
Mm-hmm.
So the driveway into the site off Coolidge is here. The only thing we'd be providing is the connection from a from a sidewalk standpoint, from the building back out to Coolidge for walkability.
What, that you just put your finger on appears to be some sort of an entrance way or an entrance feature. Is that, tell us about that?
Yep, this is just another door into the building. It's going to be blocked by a small block retaining wall, about one-and-a-half feet to two feet overall in height, and that'll be entrance into the main corridor of the building, center corridor.
Okay, and there's, will there be parking there south of the building?
No, there's just park. This is the entire parking fields right here. This right here is another medical office. This is off-site for us.
You know, can you can you show us what the, probably I'm looking at it, which elevation will people see from the road when they go by? The elevation from the from the entrance looks great.
Absolutely. So this would be the elevation that you'd be looking at from the road. So this facade here is all stone. In the center, stone. This is brick to the left. This is the CMU block and the CMU accent that I had mentioned. And then this is off in the distance to here, and which is mostly...
And there's a place for a sign there, I see.
Brick.
Looks like.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Is there a motion? Ms. Douglas?
I'll move to approve the site plan with the standard contingencies.
Motion by Ms. Douglas. Support by?
Support.
Support by Mr. Casada. Any discussion on the motion? Now seeing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Approved.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to other business. This is a sign variance to request to install four temporary freestanding signs advertising six-story mixed-use office building for lease the Royal Oak City Center at 111 East Third Street, with variances to allow prohibited sign types. Mr. Twing?
As soon as I get the plan up, it might be easier to look at. You do have the staff report in front of you for the request. The sign is in sign area three, which does not allow freestanding signs. They are proposing, based on the review in the building office and denial letter, four, would have been determined, four freestanding signs, a project sign for the development, as well as two leasing signs, and then a signage that would go around the perimeter of the site construction fencing. Those are the four signs that are being proposed. You'll see on the map, the three locations of the project leasing sign, the project sign. Basically, the banner sign will go around the entire perimeter of the site. It's determined to be one other sign. So the square footages you'll see in there, and the heights are all correct, except primarily for the the one last sentence where it said the area is approximately 78 square feet for the fence sign. It goes around the entire perimeter, not just the three, not just three as depicted in the detail. I just wanted to make sure you were aware that that was the intent for it to go all the way around. Basically, those are prohibited signs. You'll see the square footage and heights indicated for each, and they're here to appeal, allowing them to go in place.
Mr. Twing, do we know the timeframe?
Well, that's a little under discussion still, but...
Okay.
Very shortly.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Twing? The petitioner?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name is Mike Line Weber. I'm the vice president of Construction for Boji Group. We're the developers of the Central Park, or the Royal Oak City Center, rather. I'm also a Royal Oak resident. I live at 1704 Bassett Road in Royal Oak. And we're here to ask for approval of the construction signs. And these are signs that are ordinary for construction projects that have open cleared sites of this nature. As I read the ordinance, I do see things like leasing signs are allowed. However, on a freestanding kind of a situation, or pole-mounted, they're not they're not permitted. In this case, since we are clearing the site, the site would be cleared from complete lot line to lot line. It would be necessary for these kinds of signs to be mounted on a post or pole, or to create a temporary structure of some sort. These signs are temporary in nature. They would be put up at the commencement of construction, and they would be obviously removed as construction dictates, or as we're removing the barricades at completion of construction, they would come down. We do like to see, if you'll notice, the barricades around the site, we are putting in, these are water-filled, they call them jersey barricades, but they're they're a robust barricade that is above and beyond what many construction sites would use. However, in a in a urban site, and areas where you have walking traffic in the vicinity, we think it's important for safety reasons to spend the extra money on these types of materials to prevent access and and prevent tripping hazards around construction sites. And then with this kind of barricade, the fencing that goes on top of it is a great opportunity for, from a leasing perspective, to show that the building is underway, what it's going to look like, and and kind of create and build the excitement for this significant project for the city of Royal Oak. So while we've been working on this now for the past three years, I think, looking back, you know, it's important for us to be able to show the business community, the leasing community, and the residents of the project moving forward. And we're proud of the project, and we have taken some time to look at the signage, working with some Royal Oak graphics firms as well to make sure that it's appropriate and exciting, and conveys the the nature of the project itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the petitioner? Ms. Douglas?
So it seems like, you know, you think of a construction site, and you think of, you know, chain-link fence, a big chain-link fence around the site. And you think of seeing signs attached to that chain-link fence. But it's like the barricades that you're using just don't even lend themselves to those signs. Plus, you may be moving them around as you kind of, you know, do construction and need to change things a little bit. So you really lost what would ordinarily be a natural, you know, place to display your leasing signs.
Yeah, you're correct. And and we have been working with comments from the the public safety officials, the police chief and others, in order to kind of create a barricade or a barrier, visual barrier into the site. We don't want to attract, you know, make it someplace that somebody wants to kind of sneak into or anything. We do want to create a visual barrier to keep the the public safety and kind of separate the activities visually as well as physically.
Thank you. Mr. Goddick?
You're hitting on a point that I've seen with a couple other sites that have been a problem, is when you wrap this chain-link fence with a visual barrier, it creates sightline blind spots. So where you have construction traffic, pedestrian traffic, I can't see around a corner when it's got, it's fully cloaked in a sign around that chain link. What's nice about the chain link is I can see through it and see if there's traffic coming out. So my concern is if you wrap this whole fencing area, that there's going to be a lot of blind spots in the corners where traffic meets.
And that's a, you're you're right. That's a great point. We are working with the city and our construction manager on both the location of the barricades in order to create a safe zone and efficient work zone inside the site, but also not to block sightlines for... block sightlines for turning corners and things. In addition, for the gates and the points of entry into the site, we'll have personnel there when the gates open to both provide security on site and also to help when vehicles are coming and going to make sure that it's a safe, a safe intersection, I guess, at that point.
I guess we can rely on the city building officials to make sure that gets done right. But I, you usually put those barricades as far out as you can for the, to optimize the construction on the site, and then that, you know, creates the perfect problem for wrapping it. I don't know if, when you wrap the entire perimeter, if you can have open spots where it wouldn't be a sightline problem.
If, as we go forward, if there's a problem with those corners and those intersections, we're certainly responsive, and, you know, we can pull, you know, signage or barricades back. One thing you'll notice on the site plan that shows the, where the locations are, is there's a dash line that runs around the outside. That's, that's the line that the construction folks would strictly like to move out in a permanent way, but we're not proposing that. When there is street work and road work that needs to take place, we'll put temporary barricades out there. We're not going to move this big, the fence, the, the upper part. We'll move, we'll add jersey barriers or other protection means out there, so that we're not disrupting the sightlines of the street when we are working out in those areas.
Is there a way to handle pedestrian traffic that likes to walk along Third Street? Is, are, there going to be signage to direct people to cross the street to-
Yes, there will be. Yeah. What you're not seeing here is the, the safety signage that would be part of this project or any project that will go through the city, through the Department of Public Works and the Planning Department to make sure it's all done properly.
Thank you.
Mr. Chase, who had your hand up?
Yeah, you kind of touched on it. There, there will be dedicated construction access, so you'll have equipment and people going in one entrance, correct?
Correct.
Not multiple around the alley and around each side of the site.
That's correct. We've, we've presented, been working with the Planning Department on the site access points for both this project and other proj, you know, the other larger city project around it, to make sure that we're working together, that we don't disrupt, and, and that the gates are located in places that make sense.
Mayor, do you have it? Okay. Mr. Casada?
I just, for the record, I want to be 100% clear on this. So, I'm looking at the, the three signs. In fact, you've got it there. I don't know if you can see those on your screen. On the bottom, you have this set of three, and that's going to be repeated all the way around the building in a banner?
Yes. The banner, and actually, as we're working with our graphics firm here in Royal Oak, they've suggested modifying the graphics a little bit on that. So, it would be, but it would be a repeating kind of a theme as you go around the project site, showing images of the building, as well as some kind of, I would say, messaging that would be there. So, the, it's a repeating theme all the way around the project, so that you see it from, whether it's behind the alley, on the alley side, or in Third Street, or in the north.
I have to ask the question, I'm sure, I don't know the answer, but has, have you done this before, where you've used this sort of colorful, repeating banner all the way around a site?
Yeah, we have. And if you look, there are a lot of great examples of, of the opportunity that these kinds of construction banners can create. And frankly, the, how they sort of add a vibrance and, and some excitement to the area around it. Construction can be a messy business, and, you know, the kind of dusty, you know, gray kind of barricades or barriers, or none at all, which are common sometimes in dust and dirt blows. This is a way to enliven that edge and provide information to the, both the business community and the residents in the area.
Well, if you didn't have the colorful printed graphic banner all the way around, what would you have normally?
It would be pick a color. You know, it's, you know, there's, if you look at the Beaumont site, they have a Beaumont blue, and, and there's kind of a blue banner, and it says Beaumont repeated. If you look at other sites, they're, the business, the printing business is getting so good at these that this is becoming more and more commonplace. The price points have dropped significantly, and it used to be you would go to the, these banner companies, and they would say, okay, here's our palette of eight different colors, pick one. Now, it's, we have gray and we have custom printed, and because everybody's going with the custom printed route.
We sometimes see that these fences, the, the covering, whether they be just a green or something else, get damaged by wind and other things. How are you going to maintain, how are they, how are they designed to maintain and not be shredded or, or damaged during the course of, I'm assuming, a couple year project?
We have, they're, they're made in sections. As you can see, the fences are built in sections of three, and these banners will fit in a section, you know. So, as we're, as they're being printed, they're individual units. And so, if one gets damaged or, or for whatever reason needs to be replaced, we just can take out that piece and replace it, whether it's with the same thing. We'll, we will be overprinting, so we'll have some attic stock.
Okay, because that, that does look trashy when that happens, as you don't-
Absolutely. We agree.
If I understand correctly, the other signs are going to be on posts, and are they, they're going to be behind the banner, though?
That's correct.
So, they're going to be elevated above, so you see the banner, the colorful banner, and then behind that, you're going to see several of these colorful signs.
Correct.
So, just a question. What prevents you from putting the leasing information on the banner, since it's so easy to print them, and then only have the banner?
We, we're willing to move this, the, the leasing signs out in front of the banner or mount it to the banner. It's really a matter of timing. We would, the leasing signs, with approval from the city, we would implement those right away, where the banner itself would, would come after the property is closed and we've got approvals from the city. So, it's a timing issue.
So, we'd see, I see what you're saying. You'd see the leasing signs first, and then it might be a number of months before we see the, the barriers up and these banners are fixed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Is there a motion?
Well, I'll move to approve the sign variance.
Moved by Mr. Casada. Any support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Chase. Any discussion? Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just add, I think it's important to, you know, given all the transformation we're having in our downtown, I think, you know, these banners and signs will help inform the public, to some extent, you know, visualize what's going there. Not everyone comes to planning commission and goes through the packets, or even the city commission, or reads every newspaper. So, I'm glad to see that. I think that, you know, the petitioner will, will do an aesthetic job with the banner. I understand the need for the sign, you know, to get it leased. We wouldn't approve these projects if we didn't want, you know, the developers to be successful, finding great tenants and exhausting all reasonable possibilities to, to get great tenants. So, I, I have no issue. I think it'll be good. You know, I'm interested to see what other creativity on those banners that could be added that promote, you know, how great Royal Oak is and how amazing it is, because I think that would be another opportunity for you to, you know, attract tenants to the building, not just the building, but, you know, the city, just throwing it out there randomly. But, yeah, I think it's, I think it's fine. I think it's good.
Any other comments? Call for the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is the, let's see, the second item under, oh, other business, other sign variance. Request to install wall signs for the hotel and mixed-use building, the Hyatt Place in the Regis at 414 through 422 North Main Street. Mr. Twain?
Well, let me see. I'll just walk down from the front of them with, I guess, the displays in front of you that are there. The variance request is to allow five wall signs on the west facade, or front facade, which is the facade of the project that would face Main Street. You can see on the elevation the placement of them. They're labeled with the types, and in the staff report, you'll see sign A, C, D, LF 1A, LF 1B, and then with their square footages listed. So, I won't walk through those in their numbers. The overall square footage is listed there at approximately 209 square feet, too, and that would get you to item B, which is the waiver of 109 square feet over the maximum 100 square feet for the west facade. Two signs are also considered prohibited signs or projecting signs on that west facade. Those are the blade sign that's on the northwest corner of the building, as well as the sign proposed on a canopy that sticks out over the public right of way. The other variance is listed, item D, are two wall signs on the south facade. Again, one is permitted, it under the ordinance. And again, the total square footage of those exceed the 100 square foot maximum for signs by some 30 square feet, and you'll see those listed as well in the report and identified on the, on the elevation.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Twain? Okay, is the petitioner here?
Jim Fields, Allied Signs, 3365 Willgiftos Clinton Township. What we're trying to do here is mark a very large commercial hotel building. Not only is it just the single use with, with Hyatt, but also has three tenants basically in it. So, we have Hyatt, we also have Regis, and then we have a future tenant, which is shown on the one elevation to the right. You can see there's a future development tenant space for the restaurant. So, what we're trying to do is allow for all three tenants on this very large building. It's architecturally, it's really nice. The design of the signs are not crazy large. The script is kept down, color is kept down. The lighting impact is trying to stay refined, so it stays and blends in. It's pretty harmonious. With the blade signs, you'll see the top corner, which is sign D, for the upper side, so we can get the visibility, as a lot of times you see going into downtown corridors now, what they try to do is go with a low-impact vertical blade sign, so people see it visually, because you're really going for your foot traffic, where all your class is going to be on the lower story. So, we're getting away from getting all the upper signage that you're seeing on these Holiday Ends and High Hamptons. So, we're trying to draw the attention to earmark the building with the blade sign, and then everything else is more of a flow on the lower section. So, when we're coming in, you want to catch the visibility, catch the blade sign up. We want Regis on the one side. So, you see Hyatt and Regis, which are your two impacts. We draw attention to the front of the building, which are Hyatt Place, which is sign C, which is on the entry canopy. The entry canopy actually is a projecting structure off the building, which is 14 and a half feet. So, it's really, the sign is only a five-inch channel letter, which attaches right to the canopy, so it's not truly what you would consider a blade-style sign or a projecting sign. It's more channel letters right on an existing canopy. Then flowing down, we have another small-impact sign to where the future tenant's going to be. Around the other side of the building, we can see the Hyatt Place, again, the marking up high, trying to draw attention there. You also have the secondary entrance for the future tenant in the restaurant, right there. Yep. If you scroll down, the Hyatt isn't really prominent. It's not really large strokes of letters. It's really refined in its space. And then as we go into the backside of the building, after we've drawn all the attention, you can see we just have the one marker for the Hyatt Place on the backside, showing then where the entry doors are into the complex itself. So, really, this is a, it's, it's a pretty unique architectural piece. It's a really sleek design. I think the signage isn't outlandishly loud. It's not super bright. We're not looking at EMCs, trying to blend and also provide for all three tenants at once. If we have to get a variance, we could go with just the Hyatt now, and in the future, you'd have to come in for the restaurant. We just want to present what this future piece is probably going to look like, put it in place, and put it before the board now for consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Okay, not seeing any. Any discussion? Or is there a motion? Mr. Goddick?
I'm mildly conflicted about this one. It's hard for me to get, I understand a need for this, the scale and the number of signs based on tenants, everything else. We, a lot of times, I usually see a better explanation for hardship here, and what, what we have written is that is minimal, is a response to that. But I also understand that this is a large structure, and this gentleman here is trying to present a, something that fits the building. So, I, I'll wait to hear from other people here, but I don't see a lot of blade signs on properties in the downtown, and I'm not sure about the one that's facing the residential on the back of the building. I talked about that a little bit, but I'll be quiet for a while.
The one on the back of the building is just the small pop sign by the door. So, it's really only, what is it, three-square-foot sign, four-square-foot sign?
Is that lighted?
So, it's, yeah, it's, it's planned on being eternally illuminated, but you're not even clearing the door header. So, it's just, basically just a placard right there.
What about the blade sign? How is, how is that illuminated?
The blade sign itself is going to be non-illuminated with illuminated channel letters. So, the only parts of that sign, as you look up on it, yeah, you can scroll down a little more. So, right there's, your brown background is solid aluminum, and the Hyatt Place script is going to be illuminated white, similar to the way it carries through the entire building. And then the color blocks will also illuminate. But again, we're, we're talking about a low-impact lighting. It's not a, a bright grab-you red or anything.
You said non-EMD. What do you mean by that? Non-EMD lighting?
Non-EMC. It's not a electronic message center.
Okay.
Everybody's changing everything, and everybody wants to go animatronic. So, it's, it's really subtle. Your, your Hyatt Place will illuminate white, your technicolor is a light up, the blade itself is not illuminated. It's just structural. So, again, you'll just see the text itself.
Mr. Casada?
I'm a little confused. I had thought, maybe I didn't understand the ordinance. I thought that if you had tenants, tenants get to have a sign. And on the west side, only two signs are Hyatt signs, and the three signs are for Regis and the two restaurants, right? That was the prior ordinance until the Supreme Court ruling where we can't read signs anymore. So, the sign ordinance was amended, and the sign, and the sign ordinance simply says you can have one wall sign at 100 square feet. So, as we indicated at the time, we went through that review and amended the sign ordinance. It became much more restrictive to businesses and buildings and things like that. So, it used to be based on eligible advertisers and tenants, but it's not anymore.
Technically, I can't see that that's a Hyatt place sign versus a Regis sign.
Just know there's two signs.
So, really, in essence, we would, if we could have presented it as per tenants, the way the code would read now, we would come in, we'd go for a variance for the Hyatt signage, and then we would also have to come again for the same property for the restaurant signage, and then we'd have to come back in for the Regis signage. By the way, the code would reach, because everything would be over footage on the maximums by the blanket that you've, you know, by the way, they've sanitized it and eliminated consideration for tenants. So, what we're doing is presenting everything that could possibly go on this building, putting it out there now for future development, even though they don't have it named, the square footage allotting for the future tenant, who will be named when they design their signs for the restaurant. We do know that Hyatt, and we do know that Regis are staples going in right off the bat. So, again, we're trying to save, going through this two, three times down the road.
Mr. Casada?
I, I, just to clarify, I mean, the, the blade sign, I don't know what the lumen count is or whatever, but it, it certainly doesn't need to be very blaring or bright, because it's on a dark background. And so, I hope that, that what you're describing is what's going to happen, because subtlety is all you need here.
And so I hope that what you're describing is what's going to happen, because subtlety is all you need here. And so, at least with that sign, that's the only questions.
Yeah, I would also think that the sign would have to be subtle, the blade sign. It's right next to some windows. It makes me reminisce of a Seinfeld episode with Kenny Rogers' chicken. And you wouldn't want that for your guests staying there in the hotel, so. I think, and I think as it relates to the blade sign and everything with a hotel, people, you know, from a wayfinding perspective, I think whether they're coming in off, I mean, it seems like it's a type of, you know, if there is a type of business that could benefit or a use that could benefit from this, it would be a hotel, because you're confused, you're coming off 11, you're coming off 696 on the main, and oh, there, that's where I have to go. Or, you know, the first, you know, time people even come to Royal Oak.
You don't live here.
You don't live here. You kind of pop out of your parking spot, and you're like, where am I? You know, this is such an exciting place, lots going on. And oh, yeah, there's my beacon. And they don't end up, you know.
A lot of miles, a lot of towns, with a lot of kids doing a lot of sports. And I look up, and then I look down. So I mean, because I don't know where I'm at. You know, I go to Milwaukee, I go to, you know, Grand Rapids, and it's here and then down.
So I think it's, for me, I feel, and I like the approach, and I appreciate it. It's not just for your benefit, but, you know, as much as we love looking at sign variances, it'd be nice.
At nine o'clock?
If we're cool with it, get it all done in one swoop, you know? Tim's got very important things to do tonight.
Well, and it was part of our suggestion to him. I mean, they did initially want to come in with just the Hyatt Place sign, but it was, why don't you deal with them all at one point in time? Because the blade sign and the sign over it, we're going to need variances for, for projecting signs anyways, so potentially deal with them all at one time. Or give yourself the option of not having to come back, so.
Fair enough to know Gary's concerns on the lighting, so we know what, we know what his expectations will be.
And, okay, I won't go any farther, but, yeah.
Ms. Douglas?
So I'm reminded of a time when we had a, somewhere else in the city, a really large building that wanted a larger-than-permitted sign. And I said, you know, well, but our sign ordinance restricts it. And Mr. Twing said at the time, that's why we have variances. And I think this is one of those, that's why we have variances occasion. This is a really big building, we have wayfinding issues. And in fact, the net effect of the signage on this building, I think, is minimal. And I'm therefore going to move approval of all their variances, A through E.
Support.
There's support, support by Mr. Chastain. Any discussion on this motion? Not seeing any. All those in favor say aye, aye. And any opposed? Congratulations. Nice signs, nice-looking signs. Okay, number three. We have administrative site plan approvals. Mr. Twing?
Those are for your information. It's, again, just the various ones that have been administratively approved from December to March.
Excuse me. We're trying to conduct the rest of our business. Thank you. Any other, any questions for Mr., Ms. Douglas?
I just have a question, just because I want to know. There's a building down east of Beagleora. Used to be an architectural artifacts. What's going in there?
Funny you should ask, Sharon.
Ah.
Go ahead. Is a, we'll call it a community center. It's Partners in Tora is the name of the, it's called Pit Stop. So it's going to be more of a private building.
They came in months and months ago.
Well, we had a little mechanical engineer.
Yours? Okay.
So we're working through that, and shortly we'll have our approvals and be back in business, so. They'll have their own events and places.
To private club.
Private club.
Okay, good, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Twing on administrative approvals? Okay, not seeing any. The last item for business is item number four. And this is a report on professional seals required for site plans. We've had a number of discussions on this at this table. And we've asked our attorney to make, provide a memo to us. I'll be honest, I just received this when I walked in tonight, so I haven't had a chance to digest this. But Mr. Twing, do you want to introduce this, or with Mr. List?
No, I think we've had discussions on it a little bit, and we're waiting for an attorney's opinion. Whether you want, it was offered by, authored by Mr. List. Whether you want him to walk through it this evening, or whether you want a month to digest it. What you want to do with it, it's up to you. I mean, Mark can walk you through it tonight, if you want to take time, or you can have some dialogue on it, or you can have a time to read it and consolidate your thoughts, and we can put it back on the agenda next month. So I'm open for whatever you want to do, and I don't know what Mark wants to say.
I just would at least want to make a short comment.
Please do.
Apologize for giving it to you last minute. I had expected only to take two weeks off in March for surgery. It turned out I did, but then the rest of March and April, I was in and out of the office because of other issues. So I know I got it to you late, so I'm prepared to discuss it today. But if you would like to digest it, send me your comments by email or call me on the phone. And then I'll be able to incorporate those comments and come back and discuss it in more detail.
I would appreciate a summary of this. It's pretty, kind of lawyer-esque for me, so I would appreciate a summary of this. And then if the commission, this is just my opinion, if the commission wants us to bring it back, we can do that, too, if you don't mind. Is that, is that the pleasure of the commission? Yes. Okay.
I'm sorry?
So could you provide us a
A summary?
Summary of this, yeah.
Yeah. Basically, I was asked to author a memorandum by your body. In my understanding of the call, the question is listed on the front page. Basically, what type of discretion is the plant commission? You want me up there?
Yeah, this is big broadcast.
What type of discretion the plant commission has in determining whether or not it wants a specific engineering or a architectural seal on plans. Currently, that's taken care by the checklist that the zoning administrator approves and basically the planning department. So our analysis is basically a legislative analysis. Which statute, which part of the statutes or ordinance were more particular, which were less specific? And those that we looked at that were more specific, in our opinion in the office, and this has been reviewed by the city attorney also, our opinion in the office is that basically the zoning administrator, the planning director, has specific authority given to that individual by the ordinance, by the city commission. So it's a legislative grant of permission. And under that authority, that person has the right to submit a checklist. That's specific. And it's specific that administrator has the right to basically administrate. So our opinion is that that basically is like legislative preemption. And that's taken the ability of the plant commission to make that decision away. Although, very much so, the plant commission has authority to list conditions on any site plan under the health, safety, and welfare, and the other provisions that are listed in the ordinance to evaluate. But we feel that this is more specific. And if the city planning commission wants to change that under one of the ordinances, you can propose those changes to the city commission. That's in a nutshell.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. List? Pretty good nutshell. Mr. Casana?
As you know, I could talk about this for hours, but I won't. I would say that
Motion to adjourn. I would accept that motion.
I would say this. First of all, thank you for putting this together, Mr. List. I would say that it, I would agree with it if that was the question that I would present. I would not present the question, can the planning commission in its discretion decide, blah, blah, blah? Because I don't think we have discretion either. The way I frame the question is, what does the zoning enabling act require for site plan approval? That would be the way I would frame the question. And that's how I did my memo. But I didn't see any reference to my memo. If you want to look at it, I sent it out for November 14th, and that's the way I addressed it. That has a, that has an email, and there's a memo attached to it.
Yeah, I have, just to make sure, I have one, two, three, four, five, six pages of the memo.
Yes.
So, yeah, I did review it.
Yeah, and I refer to the zoning enabling act at 1253501, because when you do a statutory review, one of the things you cannot do is read provisions out of the statute. You can give more weight to something that's more specific, again, so it's more general, but you can't eliminate something. And I would say 253501, four and five, require that plans that are submitted have to meet state law, which means they have to comply with the occupational code. So my position is that we do not have discretion. It's mandatory that the submittals have, the plans submitted have to have seals according to the occupational code. That's why I don't want to argue about it. What I want to do is make a proposal that we say exactly that in the zoning ordinance. We change it and state that plans that are submitted, the submissions, have to be in conformance with the occupational code. And I did actually sketch up a short, I'm going to grab it here. And I would be happy to send it around. And I'd rather worry about that. I'd rather make the proposal that we, that we state, here it is, let me pass that around. Here's what I would do. I would change 77012, site plan review, and I would just add one line that I've got in bold letters there. Here, let me bring you one. And just say, plans submitted for approval must bear the seal of a license, see as required by the occupational code. That means that engineers seal engineering drawings, architects seal architecture drawings. I think there's no downside, this is my opinion. We've talked to, talked to everybody here about this one way or another. I don't think there's any downside to requiring drawings sealed by licensed professionals to come before this body. I see no upside in allowing people who aren't licensed to do so. And you should, of course, have noticed that most petitioners comply with that anyways. It's no burden on anybody, because it's a wise thing to do, and it's good for the city. It's good for design, it's good for the master plan, it's good for health, safety, and welfare. There's no downside to it. There's no downside to it for the petitioner to comply with the occupational code. So I would suggest that we simply put it in the ordinance, and go from there and make Royal Oak a better place.
Mr. List, would the city commission have the authority to, let me back up, would the planning commission have to make a recommendation to the city commission?
Yes, it's under your powers and duties under section, under chapter 134. The powers and duties include, and I'll just read the second sentence. The plant commission may make such recommendations as it, as it deems advisable to the city commission relative to city planning and future developments of the city, and shall have all the other duties and power vested in planning commissions by virtue of the state of Michigan and the ordinances of the city of Royal Oak. So you specifically have that authority.
Procedurally, if you want to amend the text of the zoning ordinance, it follows this basic same outline as a rezoning. It, you would have to review the text, like you've done other text amendments. Procedurally, you'd have to say you're happy with the text. Direct staff to schedule for a public hearing. Hold a public hearing at this body. Make, and then after the public hearing, make a recommendation to the city commission to do X. And then it would go up to the city commission for two readings. Procedurally, if you want to amend the text, that's what you'd have to do. So you can't take an action tonight to send this to the city commission, but you could ask staff to look at it and come back to you next month with either an analysis of it, or whether you want to set it for a public hearing for next month, what you'd want to do with it. I wouldn't set it for a public hearing until you're happy with the text, the wording, so that we don't have to do it again. But if you, if you want us to, you know, Mark may comment on it, planning may comment on it, and bring it, bring it to you with, in what I would call proper amendment form. And we can do that, and then bring it back to you next month. If you're happy with it, then you can send it out for, or set it up for a public hearing in June.
So if we go down this route where we amend the ordinance, which I don't think is a terrible idea, you know, at a 10,000-foot level to make sure that everybody understands, I'm just trying to figure out from, you know, your perspective, your department's perspective, the work that you have to do, does it change anything materially in what you have to do?
We're probably going to look at, and again, I'm flying off the cuff a little bit, but I would probably look at the occupational code and get a little more specific, rather than just saying the occupational code, and say that certain drawings have to be sealed by certain people. Because I think that's the intent.
You could do that.
Right now, right now, we accept sealed plans from an engineer, whether they're the property and/or the building. And we accept them from an architect. And if I want to, if I understand, I don't want to speak for Mr. Casana, his concern is, one, or the occupational code requires the building to be sealed by an architect. I don't want to speak for you, but that's my understanding. So there's a distinction where, where we may, what we may be getting for you is different seals. And that doesn't generate a lot of issue for my staff, other than making sure it's on the checklist and telling the petitioner, he's now got to get, where we have taken one seal from an engineer for all components and all drawings to get through site plan approval. They're going to have to now potentially get different seals. And I, because, and they may do it anyways. I mean, some petitioners do it anyways. You may see surveyor seals on the survey part of the drawing, where the stormwater is designed by the engineer and stamped by them, because they got to do it anyways. So it really doesn't generate more for us than other making sure on that check sheet that they've done blank.
The petitioner may require them to get two seals, depending on the nature of the project, an architectural seal and an engineering seal.
Because we're, whether you're doing a renovation to a building, or an addition to a building, or building a whole new building, if it now says under the occupational code, the architect's got to seal this, and the engineer's got to seal that, no matter what you're doing, that's what we're going to ask them to do.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, one thing I think we want to caution if we go back and look at this is, you know, what is, I mean, one, we don't want to compromise safety in any way whatsoever, but, you know, for a $40 million project, it's not a problem. That should be done, and that's clearly going to be done. But if someone's putting a $10,000, you know, addition onto their building to make their business more prosperous, and they're not a millionaire, they're, you know, pulling in an average income or whatever, I don't know what these seals cost, and I don't know how complex they get, but I empathize the woman here tonight with the daycare. You know, I'm a preschool teacher, you know, I don't, I go to an architect, and maybe the architect doesn't know, you know, that you need an engineering seal and all that. And whatever that process is, one, I want to make sure that we're not, that it's clear and that it's apparent, and that we're not turning people away when they get here and they get embarrassed and their projects get delayed. Because for somebody that's a professional firm, it's not as an issue. But for the average guy trying to invest in Royal Oak, I want to make sure that whatever we do doesn't burden their process, or overtax them on a $10,000 project if all of a sudden you add five grand to it. It's an issue.
I see what you're saying, but I don't think, it goes to you first before we get it. So they know before they even start to do this, what they're going to need ahead of time to turn this in based on this checklist, so.
Well, some do and some don't. Some, I mean, procedurally, we get, we get plans several weeks or months ahead before they get here. And part of that might be, we've talked to them, and part of that might be, we haven't, and they just thought they knew what they were supposed to do. So part of that, the cutoff is normally six weeks prior to your meeting. Part of that is telling them what they're missing. So if we get a set of plans and it's not sealed appropriately, we're going to tell them they need to seal it. Now, the other caution I want to make on it, as a zoning requirement, you can appeal it to the ZBA and get it waived. We also have a lot of zoning requirements that, that aren't a denial. So I want to make sure we're not heading down the road, you're not going to deny a plan because it isn't sealed appropriately. I would hope not. I would ask Mark to address that. Is that a, is that a standard where he wants to defend it legally? Because if it's sealed, in the past, we've actually had plans, and one tonight that wasn't sealed, and we put a condition on, it's got to be sealed. And we're going to catch it, because most of these plans And we're going to catch it, because most of these plans are going to need to go to the building office, and before you get that sign off later, you're still going to have to come in and seal it, and then it's going to look back to make sure it complies. So I just want to make sure you guys understand procedurally how we deal with something.
So we have that stopgap when, I mean, you can approve a plan that, I mean, I don't want to, you know, make fun, that a kindergartner drew.
Well, and you shouldn't.
And then, we shouldn't, but, I mean, if we have reasonable.
And I totally agree that last month, when the gentleman had a seal that was, and I won't use the term I used with Mark earlier, but that was totally.
Yeah.
A, a different scenario than.
But if someone comes here because they went to their architect and they get it approved, but they need an engineering seal of some sort, that's going to be caught at the building department to say, hey, you know, yeah, your site plan was approved, um, now you have your drawings, and you have to have that engineering seal before we issue your permits.
But it's going to get caught also, I mean, from a, from a seal standpoint, if you want, if, if they submitted a set of plans that complied with everything else, dimensionally, parking setbacks, landskeep, and everything's on it other than a seal, there's no seal on any of the drawings. We in the past would bring it to you, we're not going to hold it up, and you'll see the first contingency is submit appropriate sealed plans. Okay? That letter is going to go to them. We're then going to, you know, they may, might be six months later, or might be a year later, they're going to come in for a building permit, and we're going to not pass it on to building, we're not, planning isn't going to sign off on it until that's seals on there. Building isn't going to accept it. So I, I, is, is your intent to have us not accept plans that aren't sealed? That, 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 that's part of the discussion I want to get into.
I, I would say definitely yes, because what I, what I want is, I want the, I want the licensee standing here before us. We're a gatekeeper, and I just want to, uh, address your issue here. Architecture is not a luxury, it's a benefit, but it's not a luxury. If you need an architect, do you really want somebody designing a daycare who doesn't have a license?
No, but I would, I would say that if you don't know, are you going to drop ten grand in drawings to do a daycare, if you know fundamentally, conceptually, we're not going to approve the plan because we don't want a daycare in an area, I would rather drop, I mean, just thinking as a business owner, I'd rather drop five hundred dollars into a plan, get the concept approved, and then I know I'm throwing five thousand dollars in architectural drawings to get it done right, and that, um, you know.
Another comment I'll make, and again, I'm, I'm looking for the direction on it as to what you want to have in the ordinance, and whatever you want to recommend in the ordinance is, is fine. There are, there are communities that don't do site plan approval until you are ready to build your building. You have to have all your construction drawings done, I mean, there are communities that do that.
Which communities?
Um, I'd, I'd have to go back and pull them out.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I'm curious.
But, but there are some, they don't do the volume of site plans in buildings we do.
Right.
And secondly, there are numerous plans that come through your approval that don't get built. So I, whatever level you and the city commission want us to demand from the petitioner is what we're going to do. So if you told me you wanted engineered drawings because you want to know where the stormwater is, then before I bring them here, they're going to deal with the engineering department, get an approved set of stormwater plans and grading plans, and then they'll come here. So it, that's kind of where I think my questions will be, is, and, and again, if your intent is to have staff not accept and not pass on plans that aren't sealed, then till we get the seals on them, they're going to set, you won't see them.
I, I think that's a nice balance. I, I don't want to step on Mr. Godeck.
Mr. Godeck.
I got a couple of comments here, and, and I guess I was, um, part of this body that was pushing for some sort of decision, thank you, Mr. List, for bringing those forward. What I was uncomfortable with in the past is when a petitioner comes forward and we decide their fate from the table here based on a review of the architectural seal, and I think that was, um, bad operation of this commission, and to define this as a good step. I also see Mr. Casada's point, that he wants to see the timeline moved, you know, he wants the seal before it comes to us, so that we can grill the architect. I don't necessarily agree with that, I understand your point. I'm of the opinion that it's nice to see plans in their development, where we see a plan that's maybe not finished, and I don't know if we could, you know, if, if there is a concern that, hey, there isn't a, you know, a appropriate groundwater plan, or mechanical plan, or an architectural plan, that point could be brought up as a condition or table it, but I don't want to send a petitioner out the door saying, I'm going to reject your plan because you didn't have the right seal, or you didn't go to, uh, you didn't do this properly. I think Mr. Twain's department has done an admirable job reviewing plans administratively as they do, as Mr. List said, uh, by the legislative portion of, of that, uh, body that does that and the checklist. So I know I'm rambling here, but right today, the opinion I read is that we shouldn't decide from this table whether, what seal is required in the interim. And if we want to amend the ordinance, we should carefully consider what Mr. Twain just brought up as to, you know, what he can accept and when can he accept it. We're starting to talk about a timeline in terms of, uh, what can be brought here and, and what condition, you know, and, and I think that needs, uh, some lengthy discussion to make sure we don't turn away developments that are conceptual in nature. Thank you.
Ms. Douglas.
When is a picture of a building, when does it become architecture? I mean, if, if I draw, if I come in here, or somebody I know draws a picture of a building, we saw pictures, drawings today, at what point does that become the work of an architect? I mean, where does it cross the line? And I'll direct that to Mr. Casada.
Okay, that's actually not an issue in the statute. The statute says if you submit a plan for approval, it's got to have the seal on it. Doesn't matter if it's on a napkin, doesn't matter if it's a full set of construction drawings. The degree of completion is not a statutory consideration. We could talk about that ourselves, but that's not a consideration in the occupational code, it's not a consideration in anything.
But you have said in the past, when we have had plans submitted with an, an engineer's seal, that you have disputed the pictures of the buildings that the, the elevations that they have given us because they're not an architect.
Yes.
Are you prepared to back down from that?
No, the, the, what architecture is under the definition of the occupational code is an application of the principles of architecture. You could conceivably do that on a napkin, but mostly it's, uh, uh, you know, once you get massing and whatever, yeah, I, I, I wish Mr. Klooster was here and he could talk about that. That is the statutory definition. There is a statutory definition with the practice of architectures, and similarly the practice of engineering, which is the application of engineering principles. There's a, there's a shorthand way to deal with that, though, and the legislature's already dealt with it, said, put a seal on it. And, and that's what I'm proposing here, and I think it strikes a good balance. I understand, I very much understand the idea that you don't want to spend all your architectural fees before you know if you have a plan. I agree a hundred percent. You could come in with a, a conceptual plan, most of the plans we get are, are schematic at best, or even pre-schematic, they're even conceptual, but there's an architecture, an architect and engineers behind them that have, have reviewed the problems and have done their problem solvings, applying the principles of architecture and engineering before they get here. That's what I want. And I think if we have Mr. Twain, um, if we, if we, if we amend the, the ordinance to say, Mr. Twain, don't accept them unless they have the proper seals, then number one, I don't have to spring on somebody, which may be, some people don't, don't like to see that, and I understand that, I don't have to do it, because they never get here. But what we do get here is, in my view, would be better projects, more competent people, and a better built environment, which is what we want.
So, next question. We have, the city of Royal Oak has participated in Oakland County's Development Ready Program, or whatever it's called. Um, I don't know that we're, I don't think we're moving through their process in order to achieve their certification, but we nevertheless have embraced those concepts. Where would, I mean, if we want to be a development-ready community, how would we behave in the circumstances that we're talking about here? Mr. Twain.
Well, you know, I, um, how do I want to say this politely? The, um, I think the process is, each community sets up its own process under, under the zoning enabling act, and I think the act says that, that the site plan review process is up to you as far as the planning commission make a recommendation to the city commission, and the city commission to establish that process. So each community, um, sets up their process based on, um, their configuration, their resources, their, their desires and their needs and their sorts of things. There's no one-size-fits-all answer to that. Some communities take all planning, planning approvals through different processes, so I, there's no one, one thing to do for each one of them. My only concern with, with this, and I'm going to ask Mark to look into it as, as far as his opinion, so it's, gets out of my office, um, well, because my opinion is that the zoning enabling act, we're not, and the city's not required to enforce the occupational licensing code. We don't enforce licensing codes or ordinances or laws that are established by the state of Michigan. We don't enforce licensing for a hairdresser. We don't go out and make sure that a hairdresser has one. So there are a lot of licensings that are put out by the state that we don't get into that review. Having said that, if you, on the planning commission, want to say, under the occupational code, you want seals for these things and these drawings, and that comes through this body and goes up to the commission, and that's what you want, that's what we'll do. But we, we normally would not get into, uh, enforcement of those licenses. Um, you know, I'll use medical marijuana as an example, the state's going to issue the license, the city's not. The city's not going to make sure they have a license. The city's role in that, if we had one, would be to approve zoning ordinance amendments where they could occur and which type we would occur. The license would still be issued by the state, or it wouldn't be issued by the state. That'd be our, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have any role in whether they complied with their license, if they violated their license, we don't have any issue with that. So very similar with, with whether the occupational code requires an architect to seal this drawing, a site plan drawing. Remember, we're dealing with site plan drawings, as I've said in the past, you can't build from these plans that you get. They're not structural, a lot of them you'll see, say, not for construction. And while I, I think some of the design elements they've looked at, they haven't looked at, uh, stormwater a lot of occasions, they haven't looked at structural issues in a lot of occasions, and some of those are the things we deal with after the fact and get adjustments in them, so. Again, I'm willing to go either route, but I, I want to be clear in, in whatever we bring under the occupational code, is if it's something that we're going to tell people you have to have an architect's seal for this, and an engineer's seal for this, and we won't take your drawings if it's not on there, that's what I'm going to do, and I hand them right back to them. Which, but I'm going to need that indication from this body and the city commission, because when they complain about it, and it delays them, which it will, that's what I'm going to point to, that's where it came from.
Mr. Godeck.
So I, I'm, I'm not done.
But I don't think it's, I guess where I was going is, I don't think that's necessary under the zoning enabling act. So it's whatever you want to do. I think what we're currently doing is adequate and legal.
And I'm inclined to agree.
But if you want to change what we're doing, that's fine. If you want to see things differently as a body, that's fine, I'm more than willing to go there.
No, I'm, I'm inclined to agree. I want us to be welcome to developments, and we know that good ideas come to us from people who, um, who still need to work out where the stormwater's going to go, and still need architects' drawings to build a properly structured building, but that's not what we're approving. We're approving a site plan, and I think there are, that we, as appointees, have the capacity to do that, the right to do it, and that it's the right thing for the city. So, I mean, as, as we carry this discussion forward, and, and we may or we may not, that's where I'm going to jump.
Well, go, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, answer.
Well, no, I, my, what I'm hearing tonight is, we're going to go back and, and look at this from, what would it mean to add the occupational code language to this, put it in ordinance form and bring that back to you next month with a little more input from Mark's office, or the city attorney's office, and then get some comments from us on what we see as, as procedural issues.
Actually, I haven't heard that at all. I, I, I want to still hear from.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, because I, I, I'm agreeing, I'm, I disagree with Mr. Casada. I'm in agreement with Ms. Douglas and, and the mayor. I, I, I'm against holding up processes. We have a planning department, a building department, an engineering department that reviews these plans, we have paid staff, we have a legal opinion, we need to follow our current ordinance. Uh, I see Mr. Casada's point, but I don't think we're the judge and jury up here of, of the site plans, and I think that we're, we're, we had the capacity to review these according to the zoning enabling act, and according to our current codes that are in place, and I feel very strongly about that. And I don't think we should be turning away people and punishing people, uh, like we did last month, uh, to a petitioner, it's going to cost them another five hundred dollars to have to reapply, when we could have simply postponed it. I feel very strongly about that, and I think that this commission was on the wrong side, and I think that, I'm glad we have this legal opinion, and I want to thank Mr. List for bringing that forward, and I think going forward, we need to be very conscious of that. I'm only one person up here, but my vote would be to continue on as we, we, we have been, we have the capacity to do. Sorry I jumped in, Mr. Godeck.
No, but, I'm, I'm patient, nothing else. And I'm going to echo your opinion, Chair, about, um, how we should proceed as a commissioner. I hate being referred to as a senior, but I've been up here longer than, um, anybody except Tim, and, um, haven't seen a lot of problems with what we've approved. There has been a few, and I think that, um, those problems where there was an issue with a building could thus be handled by someone who looks at the building code, where the trusses are not extended on a cantilever without good support in the back. And that comes from architectural knowledge, but that's something that administratively could be fixed in the city to make sure that those few problems out of thousands of plans that have come across, uh, have had. And this body, I can't agree more, is, is a site plan approval. We don't look at the architectural aspects, I don't look at beam loads and things that, um, Mr. Chase knows about, because he's a builder. And if, and we're not supposed to, that's not part of this body. We're, we're, we're making sure that the box fits on the site and does what it's supposed to do based on criteria and, and other, uh, things that are pointed out by the planning director, so I think this body has done a remarkable job over the years, and I'm, I've, uh, been happy to serve up here, and I don't see a big problem with how it's been going. And I really would step cautiously about making us more restrictive. We want to, you know, if, if, if Tim hands the developer this checklist and say, go get all these seals and come back when you're done, or I'm not going to look at it, I, I think that's something we got to be careful of doing.
Mr. Chase.
A couple of things. To your point, no, we don't look at beam loads, we're not looking at construction documents. I don't even look at that when I'm, uh, approving a site plan. I agree, this body's done a great job, however, I think we're missing the point as a whole. First thing, I would like to get Mr. Klooster's opinion, because he is an architect, and I don't think a decision can be made without the full board being present. Second of all, I think that... Second of all, I think that what is being proposed is not to change the system as of yet. It is to give everybody an opportunity to look at input into a zoning ordinance based on what Mr. List and, uh, Mr. Gillen come up with and propose it. No one's saying that just because if Mr. Casada writes this document, gives it to Mark, and he thinks it's okay, we're going to vote on it. It's going to be hashed around several times, as is in every zoning ordinance that gets amended in text. Doesn't mean that what we come up with here is saying anybody's wrong and that it's going to be passed. It's giving everybody the opportunity as part of a board to make a decision on an amendment, which happens everywhere in every board on city commission and planning commission. So I've heard that he's going to support his opinion, he's going to give it around, everyone's going to get to comment. Then if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But everyone should have the ability as part of a board, especially for those who aren't here, to hear what has to be said. And I think that's just how the system would work.
Let me ask a question because you brought up the fact that Mr. Klooster isn't here, which I don't think is really relevant, other than the fact he's a planning commission. I happen to be an expert in green infrastructure and stormwater, innovative stormwater techniques, but I would never place my knowledge for that of the, the city engineer.
But if there was something that you found wrong with an amend, or a zoning ordinance that you felt needed to be fixed, I'm sure you would voice your opinion in the same fashion to say, "We should institute more green, green infrastructure somewhere as well." Because you, I've, I've heard several occasions where you brought up green infrastructure to a, a member. And you've maybe even based your decision not to, to approve or disapprove, or deny, sorry, a plan based on that. So.
I actually haven't because I didn't have the ordinance to back me up. So I was, I was very careful about that. You're right, I've brought it up many, many times, but I was also careful not to overstep that because we didn't have the ordinance to back that decision-making up. And I didn't want to put the planning commission in a bad space.
And to, to that point, at this point, it seems that he doesn't either. But he's just taking that pass at saying something might need to be changed.
Mayor.
Yeah, so I, I think, and maybe I'm thinking about this too simple because I'm not the smartest person up here by any means. I probably rank at least eighth right now. The, uh, that's a joke, too, get it?
Tough definition.
The, uh, because of the number eight, never mind. You know, my thought is, is clearly nobody in this community, and, and none of us want to see a building or a plan put in place without, you know, proper engineering seals and architectural seals. Because that validates that whatever construction project is occurring, big or small, has a high degree and high fidelity of success. We don't want to put our residents at risk. We don't want to put patrons that come to our community at risk. And what I can't get my head around is if, nothing will be built in this community without those seals occurring. Because either they're a condition of the plan, the site plan, or they go to the building department and they get approved, et cetera. Furthermore, if we approve a site plan and there's something awry with it that maybe an architect could have figured out or an engineer could have figured out, by the time it gets sealed and there's a difference between, like Mr. Twing said, between what is submitted and what was approved here dimensionally or something like that, it's going to get kicked back and they're not going to be able to build it. It's not a, it's not a conforming site plan to what we approved. So, you know, in the end, what I'm trying to figure out, is this really a question of health and safety? Or is it so much a question of, you know, um, the economics behind promoting or stymieing or creating hassles for those who want to develop in the community? I, I don't know. I mean, I get, I get where Mr. Casada's coming from. I get the argument that you can have a higher fidelity process if things come in out of the gate, with seals, site plans. I mean, it's, you know, things are really good to go. But at the same time, if the burden's on the petitioner to make sure that they get all those ducks in a row by the time they submit for permits, and if they don't, the thing's not getting built. And we don't have a safety issue.
Well, I understand that, again, I don't want to speak in my, we do right now require seals on the drawings, site plan drawings. It can be either an engineer or an architect.
Right.
There's no reference to the occupational code and getting the correct seal under that. And I think that's what, and again, I don't want to speak for you, but the distinction is we are requiring people to submit sealed drawings. So they are required to submit them. Again, as I said, if, if, if that was the only thing missing from a drawing and because the architect was out of town or something, we're not stopping those coming in front of you because at some point, the architect's going to smack his seal on there. Maybe he did them, it just hasn't got the seal on them yet. They all have a, a, a point on them. So there's two, two distinctions I want to make in the sense of what we're currently doing versus what I think is being asked for by Mr. Casada. And I would hope you correct me if I'm wrong. Because right now, we're taking those in. And, and an architect can seal every, every, every sheet. Or an engineer can seal every sheet, whether it's a site, a site or a, or a, um, or a built floor plan or elevation. Where I think wants to go is there's going to be a distinction now on who, who seals them. The gas station on 11 Mile, used by an example, is sealed by an engineer on, on all parts of it. We've had architects seal everything on it, too. Just as, so the distinction I'm making here, and I want to make sure that people, who's ever listening, we are requiring seals now. It's just one, uh, it could be any of them.
It's not as specific as what the occupational code draws.
Right, because part of the seal on, and what we're looking for is that seal is telling us that person's responsible for what's on the drawing. So from a dimensional standpoint, under zoning code, he's sealing it. He, he's looked at the site. He's done all of this work. He's, he's either had it surveyed, he's laid it out. So everything on this drawing is correct. So that we, we don't go out and feel verified. It's, he's saying that's what's on there. So if there's something wrong, the property owner, the business owner, he's, he's going back to him to get it corrected, not the city. We're looking at those drawings. The same thing happens in the building office. They're relying on the architect or the engineer that seals the drawings to submit them. They're reviewing the drawings to make sure everything's in there and addressed. They're not, they're not correcting, if the architect says it's this type of construction and the engineer says it's this stress load, the building office isn't telling them that's wrong. They're just making sure that they've addressed it and the code issue's been addressed. If the building falls down, it's because the architect or the engineer put the right stress load on it, not because the building missed something.
Right. And, and Mr. Twing, just the point of confusion maybe for me, you can clarify, and I think you did. So if we're requiring this anyways, all we're basically saying is really the order of operation. These, these drawings, if someone comes here and the architect is out of town or somebody else did it, and we approved the plan, and we're still saying these site plans will eventually have to be sealed before they progress.
A lot of them are sealed ahead of time. But what I'm, what I, what I'm hearing is we're going to be more restrictive on who can seal which drawing, which sheeted plans. And you're going to want those before I bring them to you. Under no circumstances are you going to see these drawings until, yeah.
That's not what I'm saying.
Well, and that's what I'm getting to. I want to make sure where we're, where we're talking in direction. So I, and again, I don't want to speak, and I'm sorry if I'm stepping on you.
Mr. Casada.
Couple, just real quick. First of all, there isn't any question, I don't think, between myself, Mr. Twing, and Mr. List, that seals are required when that document comes over the counter. So we are talking about, and in fact, it's a criminal act. 339-2014 of the occupational code makes it a criminal act to hand that thing over the counter without a, a seal is required. And what we've seen, and we haven't seen it a lot, but we've seen it half a dozen times here. And one of the things I'm concerned about is that seals can be bought. Seals can be stolen. Seals can be taken out of the hand of a dead man, which happened last time. That was an exception. But if you accept the principle that any seal works, then we should have, we should have accepted the dead guy's seal. It, there's, it has to be some, some qualitative, uh, uh, element to that seal. And it's in the statute, in my opinion. It says it, the way I read it, we can, the lawyers can argue about it, but it's there. And, uh, I think that it's not a burden. I want to, uh, almost everybody does it. The only people we're going to hold up, the only people we're going to put a barrier up are the crooks. That's the only ones. And when I say the crooks, I mean the designers who are selling their seals or doing, uh, review and seal or, or doing what the guy did with the dead guy's seal. Those are the people you're going to keep out, and those are the people we should keep out. Okay? Anybody who has a good idea and for a good project, they know, they know enough to get an architect. In fact, the guy even said, he didn't know that, that the guy was a fake. Because people know the value of this for the most part. It's usually crooked charlatans who sell their services to unwitting developers. And they say, "I can do that. I can get a seal. I can get it from Joe, the engineer. I'll pay him 300 bucks and, and I'll give him a case of beer and he'll seal my drawings for me." Those people, we do not want doing our work in our town.
Mr. Goddick.
And where do you want to police that, um, seal quantitative decision? From there or from there?
I think it would be better if we, if we put it, I don't want to burden them. I'm happy to do it, as you know. But I think Mr. Twing ought to do it. Because then it never gets here, never gets here.
Well, and, and again, I don't have any issue with getting seals on drawings. The distinction is, right now, I'm taking an engineer's drawing. And if it's a legal engineered seal, I'm taking it. I'm not worrying whether it's an architect or not. Because again, it's a site plan issue. It's not, in my opinion, under an enabling act, it doesn't need to be an architect. It can be either or. It can be what you want it to be. Several years ago, when they used to issue licenses to state-certified planners, we could seal them. Wouldn't need an architect to seal a site plan. And, and the statute used to actually say that. So again, I'm going to go back to the idea that we're, what we're dealing with is site plans under the zoning ordinance, in compliance with the zoning ordinance. We're not getting building documents. We're not getting stormwater documents. And so in my opinion, either one of those seals is what they're saying is the land is correct, the placements are correct, my dimensions are correct, my scale's correct. All of these things are correct going on that drawing. So the distinction I want to make is that, yes, I agree we should have legal seals. If you want to separate that by the occupational code, then that's different than what we're doing. And, and that's where I would want direction from you guys is, is if you want us to do that, and I don't have a problem directing staff to go to the licensing site and make sure it's a current license. I'm not going to know, though, whether he's a charlatan or not and somehow sold a bad service to this guy. He's going to put a seal on it. I don't do police investigations. If he's a legal licensed person and you bought it, put it on your drawing, he's saying that he did it. That's very similar to one of the issues we had up on Vincetta when they split the lot and had a surveyor seal. And they wanted to bring arguing surveyors in. We don't get in the middle of arguing surveyors or arguing. So I, I'm not going to police that. I have no problem policing, is it, checking with a, is a current license. But again, the other issue would be, are you going to continue to let us accept? Or what we currently do, as Mark said, take an architect, take an engineer. Those are the two we take. And we will take them prior, we will take them on some very few occasions after. But that's, that's the distinction I kind of want to make.
So what would you be looking for from us tonight, Tim, to?
Well, if you want us to investigate, do anything further, then I need direction to do that. If you don't care and want to continue what we're doing, then I don't need any. Because we're, as Mark's opinion said, uh, it's, we're legal, we're, we're able to continue to do what we're doing and we'll continue to do it.
So should we?
Unless you want to change the ordinance, I don't need that.
I, I mean, I know what my opinion is. I think it's pretty clear, I've made my position pretty clear. But do we want, do we, do we want a motion from the commission for direction? Does someone want to make a motion? Or do we want to agree as a body how we want to go forward? I'm, I'm not quite certain.
Do we need a motion to let somebody propose that?
There seems to be different in opinion, so I would ask.
Yes, I think there's a difference of opinion here. And, and what I don't want to happen is, I don't want to send the staff on, uh, a wild chase to do this exploratory stuff because they're very busy. And I also don't, you know, I just don't think that we should be doing that if that's not the direction we want to go in. So maybe we do need a motion from this body and, um, some guidance for the planning department. Does that sound, okay. So does someone want to make a motion on providing direction from the planning department or a community development department?
He was first.
Mr. Goddick.
I'll try to take a stab at it. I'm going to think out loud as I'm doing it. So, um, what was presented by, uh, is the attorney's office, I'll say, discussed two issues and came up with, uh, the analysis that this commission lacks the discretion to decide which professional seals, engineering or architecture, are required. So I want to make a motion that makes it clear that we don't do that from the table here anymore in a form of a motion. And we, I want to separate that because if there's a second part of this, whether we should do some sort of investigation or discussion to change whether Tim looks at occupational code to make a decision, that could be handled separately. But my motion would be that as a body, it's been cleared up that we don't decide that here at the table.
So you're accepting the, the attorney's opinion of current operation going forward?
In terms of what this particular body decides on what seal is right, we don't do that here at the table.
Do we need to make a motion for that? Because we have the attorney's opinion that states clearly how we should be reacting to site plans going forward.
Do we make a motion to accept the report?
Oh, there you go.
Well, it doesn't really, I don't think that really clears things up. I guess, I was trying to separate into two parts because the opinion was in two parts.
Well, I think, I think he's given us guidance with his opinion on how we should be reacting going forward. And that is to, um, Mark?
It's within your discretion. If you want to pass a motion that maybe clarifies procedurally what the planning commission's going to do or...
A commissioner is out of order if he does, if he rejects a seal. That's what I want to make clear. I don't, I don't want us to decide those things from this table. And that's different from what we might want to do ordinance-wise to direct the planning department, whether to look at occupational code. So I'm trying to separate the two. That's why I'm struggling with this motion. I appreciate your patience with me in trying just to separate those two.
I guess my question, again, back to maybe Mr. List's, is do we actually need a motion? He's given us the opinion of how we need to, um, react, um, as a planning commission going forward. And until that changes, until something changes within the zoning ordinance.
That's an opinion by the city attorney's office. I don't know if this body has accepted that as a rule of procedure.
So we can make a motion to accept that?
It's probably better if you make a motion to accept it because, you know.
I'd like this body to accept as a rule of procedure that we don't administer decisions on seals from the table.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Goddick to accept the attorney's opinion. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Ms. Douglas. Is there any discussion on this?
Just a, a question. So are you referring to the paragraph in, on page five of the, the?
Exactly. Five, the second from the last paragraph?
Yes.
Hang on.
So there's?
And if there was another motion, it would be, and I apologize for cluttering this up, it would be whether to, um, investigate a, a change in how administration deals with seals.
Okay, so that's separate.
I would think it should be.
Okay, so there's a motion to accept the attorney's opinion, supported by Ms. Douglas. Any discussion on that motion?
Mayor.
I'll just argue, I mean, it's, right now, I, I'm not saying that changes don't need to happen. But I think as a status quo, you know, I think we should accept the report. I don't know how each individual commissioner will vote and make decisions. But I think, you know, I accept the work that our city attorney did here for the status quo that we have today.
Can we have a discussion on?
Can you have a discussion on, on this? Mr. Casada?
I, as I said at the beginning, the question that was asked was, do we have discretion? I don't think we have discretion either. I think, I think we're required by the zoning enabling act to apply the statute that says the seals have to be the ones required. So I, I'm going to vote no, just to make sure that it's clear, that I don't think that this opinion affects the duty of the panel, of the commissioners. But I don't really disagree, you know, with Mr. List, the way he framed the question. I just, it's the wrong question.
Any other-
I think he answered the right question, and, and it's clear, my, the motion is, as Commissioner Douglas stated, that, you know, this planning commission does not have, does not decide which professional seals are required.
Mr. Chase?
Is there two, like, I agree with what the mayor said, you know, the city attorney gave us his opinion. We should accept that opinion at this point. But then is there a second motion to allow research or no?
Just one motion right now, and then I think what Mr. Goddick was saying, there's, there's some further discussion and a potential second motion beyond this.
Okay.
There was two opinions here, and I'm separating them.
Yep. Okay, any other discussion on this motion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Was, were you and I, Mr. Chase?
I, yes, for perhaps the first half.
Okay.
I still think someone should have the ability to-
Okay. So then the next part of the discussion is whether or not we want to provide direction to the planning department, Mr. Twing's office, to research the occupational code to see if it would, or which parts of it would fit appropriately into our zoning ordinance, if that's something that this body wants to have further discussion on. Did I get that right?
I think so.
Okay.
But, Tim, would it ultimately go to your staff, or would it go to Mr. List and Mr. Gillum?
Well, I think it'll be a combination of both. It's, and I, and I think the discussion is, do you want to amend zoning ordinance tax under application submittal requirements to require seals based on the occupational code, is what Mr. Casada, I think, is presenting. So if you want us to look into that, we can look into that. And what I would, again, I'm assuming there are many items covered under there that really aren't related to site plan review and approval, and I would probably separate it, try to separate it a little bit to make it clear to a petitioner who had to seal which portions.
Okay.
If I can. And then we would put it in ordinance form so that if you're comfortable with it, you could either amend the wording of it, much like you did the tree ordinance portion when we looked at that, and then we'd set it for a hearing. If you're of the opinion at the time, you don't want to make any changes, then it would just drop. We wouldn't go any further.
Okay.
I think the motion would be to direct the staff to review and consider the proposal as submitted by Mr. Casada. And we'll get back to you on our report, unless there's something else you want to see. If you don't want us to change anything, though, I don't think you got to do anything other than what you just did.
Okay. Mr. Casada, and then Mr. Goddick?
I would make a motion in accordance to what Mr. Twing just said, that they investigate and look into amending the ordinance based on my proposal. And certainly, just as an addendum to that, yes, we could make it more specific, but that's my motion.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Casada. Is there any support for that?
I support.
Support by Mr. Chase. Mr. Goddick, you had your hand up?
If this motion or direction to Mr. Twing's department could include the opinions of the planning department and possibly other departments that may look at seals to see what the implications would be for staff requirements or difficulties with petitioners bringing plans forward, to thoroughly vet it out as far as what, what implications that this requirement would, would take. Just to expand that investigation.
Mr. Twing?
I, I don't think you really need to add that to the motion. I think part of our, at least from my standpoint, part of my review to you is, as you'll see in any text amendment, is we're going to give you the pros and cons of the city attorney's office, my office. I don't, I don't envision this impacting anyone outside the planning division office in their review. The zoning ordinance provisions don't really apply to other departments, so I don't envision any other input other than the city attorney's office and the planning staff and, you know, their input as far as what they see this potentially doing favorably and unfavorably. So, but until we get into it, I can't tell you what that totally is.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Casada, supported by Mr. Chase, to direct the planning commission to explore the occupational code. Is there any other discussion on this? Mr. Goddick?
I understand the reason for it, but I won't be supporting it based on the fact that I don't think we're doing anything wrong right now. But I think we, I made my opinion clear on if we're doing anything wrong here.
Any other discussion? Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just be, I mean, I don't, I don't think it hurts to come back and take a look. You know, clearly, this is a charged issue. I think I have an opinion that might be, you know, contrary to what the, what a potential recommendation may be, but I have no problem, you know, taking a look. And I don't think it requires a tremendous amount of staff time to pull it together. And I think, you know, hearing it out, teasing it out, and thinking about it a little more, especially in the context of receiving the report tonight, I'm okay. Not dragging the conversation on, but, you know, continuing it just to make sure we, you know, satisfy everyone's understanding so we can work solidly as a board.
Anyone else? I'm not in favor of this. I'll be voting against it. Normally, I have no problem in looking at something new or having one of our departments explore something new that might benefit or help us. And I don't, I don't think that we are doing anything wrong. We've been planning this way for a long time in this community, so I won't be supporting this. Any other opinions? Okay, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? No? So one, two, three, motion fails. Okay. So any other motions on this?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? We're adjourned.